Okay. Okay. Good evening everybody. Welcome to the Students of the Month Ceremony, City of Palaca. We always are honored to recognize our students of the month each month. They are the pride and future of our community. And we really are quite honored to have this opportunity to recognize everyone, and particularly the teachers and families as well. Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner McCaswell, since I don't seem to handle it well alone, can you help me? So we will ask you to each come up when your name is announced. And then we will also take photos with you and also with family and with your teachers, instructors. I think Commissioner Campbell's going to help us traffic-wise. And Commissioner McCaswell will hand you a certificate and we will start the process. Palaca Junior Senior High, Chlo Dashar. Also to recognize that Chlo is one of our City Youth Ambassadors as well. Thank you, Chlo. Panayo Baptist Academy, Holden Moore. Browning Pierce Elementary, Jessie Friar. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Trenton Reed. Hillcrest Academy, Justice Pollens. James A. Long Elementary, Leanne Lilly Smith. Mellon Learning Center, pre- through K, Charles Webb. Mellon Learning Center, K through 12. Daquasha Green. Can I pronounce it first? Mosley Elementary, Ari Hampton. Okay. Palaca Junior Senior High, Hallie Duncan. Panayo Baptist, Liam Bagnell. And Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Ariana Yules. Congratulations everybody, now the tricky part is the voting.
I'm gonna take a couple pictures. Did we get everyone in there? Couple more.
So we line up there.
If we get everyone over this direction here.
Line up there.
Thank you.
Fourteenth, turn my mic on, sorry. We're gonna call the meeting to order. The invocation's gonna be led by Chaplain Mulberry. Pastor Mulberry?
Good evening. Father, again, we thank you again for this opportunity to come before you. We thank you for this meeting, we thank you for this session. We thank you, God, for the leadership that you provided. Pray, God, that you will crown their heads with the wisdom that is necessary to do all for the city's sake. We ask, God, for your guidance. You said in all thy ways to acknowledge you, and you will direct our path. Give us directions, Lord, in all that we undergo to do for your glory. Continue to bless the work of our hands. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Campbell?
Please, Romney. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Krantz, roll call, please.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum. I believe he is at an FMIT meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Robbie Correa.
Present.
We have a quorum in the chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're gonna go to the In the Spotlight Employee of the Month, Ms. Jones. Or is this Mr. Hunter?
This is Mr. Hunter coming to the podium, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I know usually Virginia Jones is the spokesperson for In the Spotlight. However, tonight, we're gonna switch things up a little bit. I do wanna say, you know, when I first started here at the city, day one, I was informed about In the Spotlight. It excites me to see all of our employees are recognizing how hard each other work and are quick to nominate one another. This is year two of In the Spotlight, and I figure there's no better way to close out the year than to have Ms. Virginia Jones as the Employee of the Month for the month of December.
So, it's so exciting to be up here and kinda shine the light on Ms. Virginia. She is our HR journalist, and she does a lot for the city staff here. So, I'm just gonna read some of the notes that I submitted along for her nomination. Ms. Virginia takes time to meet with each of the employees. She has met with me to discuss opportunities, benefits, at impromptu times, cuz I will call the both of them anytime I have questions. When asked for information, she will look into matters thoroughly and make sure that we get the correct information. She takes time to travel to the different offices and engage with fellow staff. She shows up in our staff meetings all the time. Ms. Virginia strives to follow the protocols and policies that the city sets forth, and she reviews information to make sure that what is distributed is in the best interest of the city and its staff members. Her projects include blood screenings and health checks through a partnership with our insurance to keep staff healthy, both physically and mentally. Virginia aims to care for each of the staff members and their challenges in a timely fashion. She works hard to assist her fellow department heads through the hiring process to obtain quality candidates and proper onboarding. Congratulations.
Thank you all for the nomination. Sometimes for me, being the head streamer of this program, it's hard for me to step out and realize that I am an employee as well, and people are recognizing what I do. I really spend most of my time trying to, you know, look at all what all of the other employees are doing. So, I step back sometime, and when I realize that I got nominated, I'm like, you are an employee, so somebody is recognizing you. So, again, thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the, um... Oh, I'll take a picture, I'm so sorry, God.
While we're coming up for a picture noted for the record, Commissioner Borum's present.
Approval of minutes, has everybody had an opportunity reading the November 9th regular meeting minutes? And do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes from November the 9th?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Saying none, we'll move on to the November 16th, 2023, excuse me, special call meeting. Have we had an opportunity to read the minutes, please? And a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. We will get to public comments later in the agenda, but if you do wanna make a public comment, could you please grab a yellow card and fill it out now and get it to Ms. Krantz, so that we have those when we get to that point in the agenda? Thank you. We're going on to public recognition, presentations, proclamation.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. It's, I'm very pleased to bring this proclamation to the Commission for recognition of one of our volunteers. By this proclamation, Roberta Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do recognize Dr. Shan Pierinton for her tireless volunteer efforts amongst numerous organizations for many decades in our community, and we wish her the best in the next chapter of her life and her new community.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Yes, I'm gonna, I was gonna bring Courtney.
How everybody doing? On behalf of the City of Palaca and the Community Affairs Department, we wanna honor Shan Pierinton for her seventeen years of service and her dedication to the City of Palaca through her work at the Waterworks Environmental Center and the St. John's River Center. As a beacon of kindness and commitment, Dr. Pierinton has tirelessly devoted countless hours to bettering the lives of our fellow citizens through her unwavering passion for the community service that has spanned decades, during which time she has demonstrated exceptional leadership compassion and unyielding spirit of giving. On behalf of the City and the Community Affairs.
Okay. This is hard. Okay, first, I want to say thank you to the Commission, the Mayor, everyone here. This is truly an honor when you do have an opportunity to work with Waterworks and the River Center, and you realize what incredible assets those are for our city and our community. It is, it's more fun than it is work, but I have to say, I'm just one of many, and so many of our volunteers are here tonight, so I would like to have them stand. They represent both the River Center and Waterworks. There's Earl, Mike, Joe, all of you. And so, over there.
Here, Correa, as I say stand, can we ask them to come forward for a photo?
Sure, okay, all of you come forward. And I estimated, just so you know, the going rate for a volunteer in Florida is about twenty-one dollars an hour, and that's just the average. Some of these people have incredible talents and abilities. They're like engineers and retired, all kinds of things. And they come rain or shine, as evidenced by tonight. And so, where would you like us to do? I saw your agenda, it's huge. Okay, do this fast.
We're all gonna herd up there.
You need to get up there, too.
Yep, you need to get up there as well, and you need your plats.
Madam Mayor?
Can we ask that the Waterworks Environmental Center volunteers remain standing at the dais, please? Waterworks volunteers, please remain standing at the dais.
Waterworks, a garden is Waterworks, yeah. We have an organic garden, too, and so several of these people are gardeners. If you've not been to Waterworks, please come visit. You're part of this. You're a big part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
We're gonna take a picture with that.
Okay, this is an exciting moment for the City of Waterworks, all the volunteers. This is from the state of Florida. This is to certify that recognition of its historic significance. Palaca Waterworks has been officially enlisted on the National Register of Historic Places effective the thirteenth day of March, 2023, on the Nat and Hoxo in the continent of the interior, Washington, D.C. Thank you.
This will be somewhere really good.
And thus, some of you know that working on this natural historic registry thing, it takes years, sometimes it's real, a lot of behind the scenes. Thank you, there we have it, Shan.
Okay, next on presentations is a report from NEFRAC, announcement of kickoff of community vision portion of comprehensive plan. Ms. Walsh?
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I would like to introduce Monica and Cassidy from the Northeast Florida Regional Council. They are going to be our, they are our consultant for this portion of the comprehensive plan update, which involves the community visioning process. And they have a short presentation they'd like to give to you. And as soon as they... You ready? Okay, get away.
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Dominguez, and this is my colleague Cassidy Taylor, and we work for the Northeast Florida Regional Council. Today, I'm here to speak to you about the Palaca Vision Plan. The NEFRC provides various services and technical assistance. As you, some of you might remember, we do work in planning, economic development, resiliency, emergency preparedness across the seven county region in Northeast Florida. Oh, what did I do there? Did I touch something? Okay. Our project team for this, for our project is our senior executive, Beth Payne, who's our CEO, Eric Anderson. We also have the Planning Economic Development Team, Jack Shad. Some of you may have worked with him in the past. Myself, Cassidy Taylor, and our GIS expert, Robert Jordan. The City of Palaca needs to update its comprehensive plan to better reflect the current and the future community needs. NEFRC has been contracted to create a vision plan through community outreach, review of existing plans, and analysis of data trends relevant to a comprehensive plan. The final vision plan will include a community vision statement for the comprehensive plan, a visual preference survey that will feature results, a literature review of the documents we've been provided, and a trend analysis of existing conditions. The vision plan will then be used to inform updates to the comprehensive plan. Let me walk you through some of the meeting schedule that we have set out for this project. Today, we're introducing the project to BOCC. We'll be back in about a month to do a stakeholder committee meeting at the Ravine Garden State Park. These are all public meetings, as you know. This meeting will be used to identify priority topics that will inform the vision plan and the online survey. Now, the online survey will be live during the public input phase of this project. So, the intention is, most of our meetings will be in the evening, and so, we would like to really get the community-wide input. So, for someone that can't make an evening meeting, they can access the online survey, and that will have the same impact. Following that, we will do a community discussion. At the one meeting will be at the Price Martin Center in February. The second one will be in March at the St. John's River State College. And here, we will present, we will present a visual preference survey. So, sometimes, we don't really know. We know what we like and what we don't like, but it's much easier to react to something. So, the survey will actually feature a lot of design and architectural elements to guide people to tell us what they're thinking in terms of their comprehensive plan. Following that, we're back at the Blue Crab Pop, at the Blue Crab Festival for a pop-up event, more input, and we're starting to do some of the, we're starting to ground through some of what we've heard. Then finally, in May, we have, we will draft, we will draft all our results and bundle them, and we'll ask the community, did we get it right? Is this what we've heard? Then in June, we come back to BOCC, and we also come to the Planning Commission with a draft vision plan. By August, we have a fine, you provide us comments and questions, and by August, we have a final vision in front of you, and we will seek approval by City Commission. How can the community participate? In lots of ways. We have an online survey, the January 9th meeting. There's two meetings, a community meeting, discussions, one in February, one in March. Then we have the Blue Crab Festival pop-up event, and then in May. Also, the visual preference survey, or excuse me, the online survey will be live from January till May. So, this is a poster of the next meeting that's coming up. January 9th at 5:30, community is invited to come out to the Ravine Garden State Park for a stakeholder meeting. Starting at 5:30, we'll be there with drinks and granola bars. And I open up the floor if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. The community engagement and stakeholders meeting, I would like to see another meeting at a location that we recently obtained, which is the Jenkins Middle School, well, the Jenkins Community Center. The Community Affairs will be having other events over there, and I think we could have a captured audience that may wanna participate, and I think that'd be a good place to get some feedback.
Thank you.
Any other input or questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I add a couple of things? What I would like to ask the Commissioners is, is for their input on additional stakeholders. We have drafted a list in a spreadsheet, mostly of the stakeholders that were present at the Economic Development Meeting at the ravines last year, but we would like to add to that, members of various community groups, perhaps Rotary, Kiwanis Clubs, churches, whatever you think might be appropriate. We'd be happy to take input on that. And you are welcome to email it to me, and I will pass it along. I also wanna let you know that I think that this is an excellent choice in our consultant, and you should be in very capable hands throughout this year coming.
Have you shared that spreadsheet with us?
I have not, sir, but I will. That's all I have, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you. Next, a report from the Police Department, Chief Shaw.
I'm sorry, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm proud to be here tonight to have the honor to introduce you to some of our new hires, as well as our appointed and promoted officers. So, at this time, if I could have all officers come up front, please? We have two new hires. One could not be here tonight, but you guys are very familiar with Ian Roberts. Ian is currently in the academy, and one of the courses he is taking, one of the high liability courses he is taking, he was unable to leave the academy at this time. He's in a mid-day academy. So, the evening time is very important, and the time in the academy is counted. So, we were unable to have Ian here with us. Early today, we were able to swear in all individuals, and we would like to take this time just to introduce them to you and have their selected individuals do the pinning for their badges. First up is Matthew Dickerson. Matthew, if you'd step forward for me, please, sir. Matthew is a new hire for us. Matthew is our first day starting with us. He is very excited. Our interview went very well. One thing I found out about Matthew is looks can be deceiving. Although he looks a little older than he is, he's pretty young. So, starting out with Matthew, what I learned is, looking at his folder, I noticed that it didn't match when he came and sat down. And I was told that I would be interviewing a young individual, but when he walked in the office, it didn't, it didn't see, didn't look the same. So, I double-checked to make sure I had the right person in front of me, and I did. And without, with no surprise, he didn't hesitate at all to do a very good job in expressing his interest, not only in law enforcement, but to serve the community. So, we were glad to be able to bring Matthew on. So, we are pleased. We believe he's gonna bring a wealth of joy, and he's been excited and eager to start his career. So, please help me welcome Matthew Dickerson. And signing Mr. Dickerson today will be Colton Lee.
Thank you very much, nothing to say here.
Next up, we have an appointment. This person will be moving from patrol sergeant to detective sergeant for major crimes. David Lazo was born in Cuba and migrated to the US when he was 12 years old. After high school, he enlisted in the US Navy, where he served ten years as a boat swaymate, first, and then personnel specialist. David served during Operation Enduring Freedom and was awarded the Navy Achievement Medal and Joint Service Commendation Medal. David has a seventeen-year-old son, where they both enjoy soccer, although they, they both like different European teams. He wanted to make sure I made mention of that. David started his career with the Palaca Police Department in 2012 as a patrol officer and quickly became a field training officer. After three years on patrol, David became a narcotics detective and did so for over six years. Due to his numerous accomplishments, he was nominated and won Crime Stoppers for Northeast Florida Officer of the Year. He also won the Palaca Police Department's Police Officer of the Year and Detective of the Year. David also served as the FDLE Narcotics Task Force, where he worked with federal, state, and other local law enforcement agencies. In 2020, David was promoted to the rank of sergeant in the Patrol Division. A year later, he became a K-9 handler. As an officer, detective, and sergeant, David has participated in several community events that have been organized by the Police Department to strengthen the relationship between police and the community. We are proud to announce David Lazo as our Major Crimes Detective Sergeant. Next up, promotion to sergeant is Quentin Beckton. Quentin, if you'll step forward. Quentin Beckton was born and raised in Palaca, Florida, and educated in Putnam County School District. He began his law enforcement career in 1999 while attending, at the time, the St. John's River Community College Criminal Justice Academy in Palaca, Florida. In August of 2002, he was hired by the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. During his four-and-a-half-year employment, he worked patrol, investigation, school resource, and was assigned to other specialty teams. In 2006, he started with the St. John's County Sheriff's Office. During his seventeen-year employment, he worked patrol, special investigations unit, and traffic as a DUI unit, and a motorcycle deputy. In 2022, he left St. John's Sheriff's Office and started with the Palaca Police Department, where he's currently assigned in the Patrol Division. Officer Beckton has received numerous commendations and awards throughout his career. He holds a bachelor's degree in sociology with a minor in criminal justice from Baden Cookman University, and a master's in public administration from Barry University. Quentin Beckton came to us after twenty years to return home and service community, and we're very appreciative of it. And we have, we are glad to have the honor to be able to promote him to sergeant with the Palaca Police Department. Sergeant Beckton, who will be pinning you today? His mother was doing the honors to pin him this evening.
The first, the pen, the first I've lost, and she put my first badge on, and my first promotion. And I'll still use a stick if I have to.
Next up is our promotion to Lieutenant. Colton Lee, if you would, plus, please step forward. Colton Lee is the son of retired sheriff's deputy and an active elderly care executive. A sense of caring and wanting to help others were instilled in Colton at a very young age. From the time Colton was old enough to play cops and robbers with his older brother, he knew that he was going to become a police officer. Colton is happily married with his wife of thirteen years, who share two beautiful girls together. Colton is an active soccer coach and soccer athlete. I, I, I'm holding it together, I'm trying. Co- Colton's fitness and soccer passions are shared with, shared with him by his wife and daughters. Colton Lee has been with this department since March of two thousand and eleven. Colton has held many positions during his time, to include Patrol Officer, SWAT Team Member, Burglary Task Force Officer, Street Crimes Detective, FDLE Drug Task Force Agent, Patrol Sergeant, Crime Suppression Team Leader, and Major Crime Sergeant. Colton's approach to law enforcement has always been a lead-by-example approach. Colton's highlights of his career include Detective of the Year, Crime Stoppers Officer of the Year for Northeast Florida. Colton has organized and conducted numerous community events within many elementary schools throughout the county. And in the winter, Colton has organized Christmas and Halloween giveaways. In the summer, Colton has organized cool-down with the cop, ice cream parties, and Colton is proud member of the agency that strives for a positive, friendly relationship with the community. I think the last part for me is more touching. Um, Colton spends time, he's the first one when, when, uh, we do reading for the elementary schools, to volunteer to go read at the elementary schools, and, and that's a big thing for us. Um, just his desire to, um, give back to the community, participate in the community is, is huge. But then overall, when we were short-staffed, Colton was one of two individuals that was tasked in the Detectives Division, and was, uh, tasked to investigate major crimes, and did tirelessly, without any complaints, uh, addressing major crimes, and, uh, doing it very successfully. So we gave a huge thank you to Colton for giving up, uh, up of his time and dedicating it to us and, and the community. Colton, who will be pinning you today?
My father Darren Lee, uh, company by my wife.
You know, first aid? I, I'm busy, so. No, no problem, you take your time. I, I don't want to have to perform any first aid tonight. All right, thank you, Colton. Next up is George Matthew Newcomb. Say that again, please, say that again, please. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, last, next up, um, last but not least is George Matthew Newcomb. George Matthew Newcomb. Captain Matthew Newcomb started his law enforcement career with the Palacca Police Department in October nineteen ninety-five as a police officer. In June of nineteen ninety-eight, he was promoted to the rank of detective in the Street Crimes Unit. He was promoted to the rank of corporal and named Officer of the Year in two thousand and one. In two thousand and two, Captain Newcomb earned his Associate's in Science Degree from Vincent's University. He was transferred to the Street Crimes Unit as the unit supervisor in two thousand and three. In two thousand and four, he was promoted to the rank of Sergeant and led a patrol squad until two thousand and nine. While serving as a patrol sergeant, he graduated from Flagler College with a bachelor's degree in public administration, and attended the University of Louisville, uh, the University of Louisville Southern Police Institute Administrative Officers Course, and earned his master's degree in administrative of justice through the University of Louisville. He was promoted to the rank of captain in two thousand and thirteen. He currently oversees the day-to-day operations of the Patrol Division. Captain Newcomb today will be promoted to Assistant Chief. He is... He is thus far our cornerstone, as it stands for, from day one, and loyalty, and dedication to the Palacca Police Department with the time that he's put in. Uh, as is stated, he started in ninety-five, here we are, about to enter two thousand and twenty-four. Um, it, it speaks volumes when it says the, the, the number of, of days, months, years, uh, that, that has been dedicated to the Police Department and the City of Palacca. Uh, Matt is entering something that, um, is very, um, thankful for me, because, uh, without him, it doesn't, it, it wouldn't allow me to do some things that I need to do, uh, to fulfill me, and more so in my position. So I'm very grateful to the fact that we have somebody that's qualified to step in this position. And from this position, it allowed us to fill other positions that we had, moving down, and sparked the energy throughout the Police Department that you're seeing today. Uh, we are, um, two position, or one position shy, I'm sorry, uh, for, three positions in looking to go into the academy, and we're hoping, coming into the early year, to be full, for the first time in almost eight years. So, thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to present these individuals to you today. We're not going to take a picture, can we get a picture with, can we get a picture with him? Yes, sir, uh, gentlemen, if you guys will step back up front for me, please.
Mr. Whitson is here from Local Government Visions to talk about the team-building exercise, and he has to travel a distance after this, so out of courtesy, we're allowing him to do his presentation now.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Commissions, an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for your courtesy. Um, my sister-in-law passed away, and so, uh, I'm heading to the service, so. I think there was a, um, I was here on November nine, and, uh, we talked about, uh, different formats for the team-building exercise, and I think the, uh, Top Golf is now the top choice. Uh, there was a survey sent out in terms of where you would want to hold the retreat, and, uh, I think that, uh, bore out as number one. Uh, right now, it looks like the best date for that is January twenty, if we could get the facility, uh, booked for that date. And there would be those that could, could make that date. The, the next part of the, uh, that would be the social portion. I think I sent a letter back to the Mayor and Commission about how we would restructure everything. Uh, the Top Golf would be the socializing, getting to know people, uh, end of the retreat. And then, uh, there would be the actual team-building retreat on a separate date. Uh, and that, right now, uh, it looks like two dates are coming up, February fifth and March eighteen. Um, the only concerning part of that is, according to the poll, it looked like three out of the five, and I would like to have five out of the five, uh, come, if possible. Uh, so those are the main things I wanted to share with you, and see if that approach was, um, to your liking. And then I just had one other question, Madam Mayor, about this, and then we can, you know, get the direction of the Commission and go forward. The only other thing was, there was, in the original proposal, uh, there was a, um, kind of a personality assessment for, um, people, that way you could tell who likes detail, and who may be, uh, oriented in a different manner. It's a very useful, uh, tool, might be something that would help build, build bridges and understanding, and... Okay, am I too close? Okay, all right. Um, if, if there's a desire to do that, I need lead time to order the instrument, and I need email addresses, because what happens is, you would fill out the instrument, and the results would get emailed back to you, and actually, under this particular tool, not only would we go over the results, um, which is individual, and then you could share as you would like, uh, there's email follow-up that comes from the company as part of the service. So I didn't know if that was something you still wanted to do, there's a small charge for it, and, uh, a lot of lead time and coordination, so I thought I would ask that. So basically, three issues, uh, making sure that we're good with the, uh, Top Golf on January twenty, and then get as many people as we can for the other dates, and then the format, if you pursue, wanted to pursue the, uh, personality assessment.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill, do you have any thoughts on any of these?
Said, um, the fee, what is the fee associated with it?
Uh, it was, the origin, we didn't change the fee from the original proposal, I think it was twenty-two seventy-five, if I recall correctly. Um, I think that's four hundred dollars for that, yeah.
Commissioner McCaskill, would you please turn on your microphone? Or speak closer?
Um, you did send out a, is this part where the dates included in the, the one you sent out to us, the Google form, for us to respond for dates? The January twentieth, February fifth, March eighteenth, did you include those dates? I can't remember.
I believe so, I can look, if you'll give me just a moment.
Yes, those were the dates that came back from the majority? Yes, ma'am. Oh. Right, yeah, I think the mayor's sent hers in twice.
But anyway, um, anything else?
I just want to make sure.
This is the results of the poll, Commissioner McCaskill, I, I can't see who voted which way, but it shows me who, what number was the top, because it's anonymous voting.
So you said that it was February and March, that you weren't clear on the date, but you did get a clear date for January twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am, the, it looked like that the Top Golf, uh, for the January twenty was the number one response. Is that correct, Sonny? And then, two, um, if you're going to do the Top Golf, that's the social activity, and then the actual team-building would be on a separate date, and the two top, um, dates that came back were the, yes, ma'am.
So, just ask him, are we going to give an answer tonight, or are you going to send out another one? February fifth, I don't have my calendar, is that a Saturday again? March eighteen? And I think was March eighteenth during spring break, break time for us?
And again, if you wanted to... Yeah.
Was it February eighteenth or March eighteenth?
February fifth, March eighteen.
Yes, ma'am. And again, if you wanted to do the personality part of this, uh, that gives plenty of lead time, because it does involve some email traffic and coordination, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Borum?
I'm just, I'm flexible, I, I didn't even, um, send in any dates, I'm, I'm flexible.
Commissioner Jones?
So, we're saying the eighteenth is fine for the actual, the team-building exercise? No, that's the, the social part.
Yeah, the twentieth of January will be the Top Golf social, if we can get the venue not nailed down, that's, you know, something the staff would have to work on.
It was between those two dates?
Yes, ma'am.
February fifth and March eighteenth?
Correct.
What is the consensus of the group, the eighteenth or the fifth for the top team building? Eighteenth for me is fine, okay, I think the eighteenth then.
Okay, and did you want to pursue the, um, personality assessment as part of it? Okay.
Okay, that seems to be the majority as well.
All right, you got it, uh, we're looking forward to working with you, and if you have anything else, um...
What is the location for the March eighteenth?
Oh, okay, there were some choices in the survey, and I think Sonny, uh, had those venues. Think it was, um...
It's on the screen.
Yes. So I guess the choices are to go back to the Top Golf venue, or to the Valhalla, uh, Hall. And that would be for a half-day thing, as I understood it.
I thought that when we, if I'm remembering correctly, that if we were to have done the Top Golf, it would have been done together.
That's, that's what I...
That's the way that it...
If, if that's what you'd like to do, we can do that, we can make that work, it's just that there's more coordination and a lot going on, you know, to make it all happen on one day in one venue.
And also, is there more cost to that as well, to do it all?
Well, the cost of the venue and all, and the food and all that is separate, but no, no more cost for us.
No, no, I know that, I'm, I'm talking about the venue, not you specifically.
Yeah.
Um, and Mr. Hunter must have stepped on it.
I just think with, if we go, if we were to do it two separate occasions, it would require two separate bookings, which would be a cost.
Correct.
Um, so that's why, again, I wanted to bring up, when we were initially received this, that it said that it would be done together. So if that's not feasible, I think we would have to come up with a solution to the location if it's not going to be done together, if we select another date.
And my, my question was, did something happen? Because it was, it was stated that if we did it at Top Golf, it would be two half, I mean, there'd be earlier session, and then there'll be, uh, and we'll do the, um...
Yeah, there's the social aspect to it, and then there's the actual retreat, yeah.
Social first, and then the, so what changed? Did, did anything change?
No, I'm just trying to make sure that we get everybody on the same page. Um, again, I think it would be better to do it two separate times, but if there's a cost factor, that's fine, we'll just have to kind of combine some things, and again, it, it just, if, depending on the date, if it's March eighteen, that still gives us plenty of time for the personality assessment, so.
Right, but what, what, what happened? You gave us the dates, and we, that's what we selected, we selected...
Well, I'm just now finding out about the actual dates, yeah.
Oh, that's, go ahead.
Yeah.
Sonny, do you have how the survey was presented to us available?
It was on Survey Monkey?
No, I don't think she's... Yeah.
I think it was on the survey.
Yeah. We, we didn't have any dates originally, because we didn't know how...
So, I think in order for us to move forward, and so that we can come up to a resolution, if we're able to do it on the one day, let's do it on the one day. If it poses a problem, bring it back to us, and then we'll make the decision. Uh, because again, you don't know how much, we don't know the availability of Top Golf and the length of what we could do, so if you can bring, if you can first check that information out, bring that back to us, if that's not an option, then we'll come back and have the conversation about the two separate options.
That, that sounds good, and with our first choice being the March eighteen, or the Jan-, or the January twenty. Okay, so the January twenty is the top choice, if we can do it all together. And then if not, then we'll look at the other date. Because a lot of this was involved with the venue, we didn't control the venue, and we didn't control your schedule, so we were just trying to get those nailed down.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're going to move on to City Manager and Administrator Reports, um, Ms. Cotty, please. Ms. Cotty, please, presentation on the quarterly financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. The city of Palaca for the nine months that ended September 30, 2023. Our gross revenues were forty-four million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand. And our expenditures, forty million, three hundred twenty thousand. So at this point, based upon budgetary accounting. We have a. Revenues and excess of expenses, four million, four oh five. So basically, all of our funds, none of them operated at loss, which is really great. And that's based upon budgetary accounting. I keep saying that because we have not yet prepared for the audit. We're in the midst of that now. Our general fund generated thirteen million and also spent thirteen million. The golf course did well as well. So all of the funds, utility fund would be our next largest. Fund of operating at revenue stream of sixteen million, five hundred forty-eight thousand. And they had a profit of 1.5 million. So that's pretty much the the gist of it. We we operate it. At a profit. That's the main thing. For the city of Palaca, budgetary accounting, okay?
Thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Cotty?
What is the, what is the reserve sitting at?
I would have to get back to you. I did not memorize that. I don't know that offhand, but I don't mind immediately.
In in all reports, I mean, if even when we get the ones electronic, if the reserves can be there, then it's going to be great.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Anybody else have any further questions from Ms. Cotty? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Update on the draft charter review workshop agenda, Ms. West?
Okay, so we have the charter review workshop is currently scheduled for January 8 at 10 a.m. We have a draft agenda. The three main substantive topics for discussion. Will be whether or not the city would like to use the assistance of a professional facilitator. And I do believe Ken Parker from Senior Advisors has made himself available. Via Zoom to answer any questions about his professional facilitation services that he offers, which are free of charge. Because of the population of our city. The second substantive topic would be the composition of the Charter Review Committee. So who you would like to appoint to that committee moving forward. And finally, and probably most importantly, the scope of the task for the Charter Review Committee. So you would need to discuss exactly what part of the charter. Or if the entire charter is going to be reviewed. I have provided a memo previously back in October of some of the areas of the charter that definitely do need attention. So those are basically the topics to be discussed on January 8.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Ms. West?
Of those, have you had a chance to make good progress in the charter in terms of looking at? How far have you made, made it through the charter?
I've reviewed the entire charter. It's it's actually not a very lengthy document. If you take a look at it, the overwhelming majority of it is the legal description of the city. Which, as you can imagine, it hasn't been updated in almost a century. So that. In and of itself is going to be an extremely time consuming process because we're going to have to pull all the annexation ordinances that we've adopted over time. And get the help of a surveyor to basically redo that entire legal. I can't imagine that a work like that could be done in any time period less than six months. And that's just off the top of my head. But after you remove the legal description from the charter, it's just a couple pages.
It's not much.
Yep.
Because you you had some, I guess. Things with regards to the meats and by.
Yes, the the legal is sorely out of date. Yeah, yes.
All right, so, all right.
I, I would like to, for the scope.
Yes.
Like one of the main things we have. Had to discuss most recently is the structure of direct reports. And that's. Who. Directly reports to the city manager, who directly reports to the commission. And I think we need to definitely make that. Clear, concise. And that wouldn't take long and we could get that truthfully in on the next election cycle. If we, we could, if we wanted to, but. I just want to make sure and put that on record that that's number one scope.
Absolutely.
That could be, that could be moved to, to the top of the list and then the rest of the stuff to follow.
So just by way of example, you have nothing in your charter that references the airport authority. So, you know, if if you're going to embark on an effort of reviewing the charter. I would strongly encourage reviewing that October memo so you can see that the gaps that I've identified.
And it is going to be a thorough and lengthy process because it hasn't been reviewed. And historically, there's no record of it being reviewed almost since its inception. So.
That is correct. I have no documentation of it ever being reviewed in the past. So this would be the first time ever since the city was founded that the charter would be reviewed, from what I can tell of the documentation.
So your legal opinion. The amendment can be made. We don't have to review and make all the changes or recommended changes at the same time. We can amend. Portions.
And or you could simply adopt a, an ordinance to be part of your code. That can, and that's how you've been functioning. But it it's not lining up very well.
Right, for an example, when it's not in the charter. Clearly that. Some things not in charter, we haven't followed. I won't say today.
Any, anything else?
I think that she hit it right on the head with us to make sure that we review that October document that she gave to us.
I'll recirculate that.
And I will make the recommendation that we follow that.
We are going to move on to public comments. Before I open the floor, public comments are limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. If you do want to make a public comment. On anything that's not specific on the agenda, please fill out a yellow card and hand it to Ms. Krantz. At this moment, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Mr. Parish. Please give your name and address for the record.
Kenny Parish, 358 Easton Road, San Mateo, Florida. Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I come here on behalf of long-term Putnam County residents. My family settled and built a fort in St. Augustine in the 1500s. And we migrated down to Putnam County because we were deeded part of Putnam County. And I'd like to say that after coming back to Putnam County three years ago. I walk around downtown Palaca and I am just totally shocked. The streets are in disarray. No red lights work. It's kind of shocking. I talked to the mayor today. She assured me something's going to happen in 2024. But it hurts my soul to see our city like this. We have a beautiful city, but our downtown is embarrassing. This is the way Sanford was a few years ago. If you go to Sanford today, it is gorgeous. I'm proud of Sanford. Tampa's done the same thing in their downtown area. Why can't we? We have a. A plus in our money. It's just embarrassing seeing our streets like this. If you drive up. St. John's all the way to South Palm Avenue. It will beat you to death in your car. And you will stop at least twenty times at red light or stop sites. What is going on with our community? We need to have more pride about Palaca. All of us. I'm willing to do whatever it takes. And the downtown businesses are also hurting very bad. I attended the parade. It was beautiful. Did a great job. We had a couple wild people get in at the end and kind of disrupt Santa Claus. And he couldn't show up for like 20 minutes. But apparently they got it under control. But I'm concerned about the future of our downtown area. Please, let's make it look better. And that's all I came here to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Owen? Please hold the applause. Thanks, though.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here on.
Name and address, please.
Name and address, Cowan Amayaboo. And my address is 620 North 16th Street, Palaca, Florida. I, I'm here as a resident of North Palaca. And I just want to, I'm not sure if the commissioner. The the board is aware of the state of Ride Solution. I'm also the editor in chief of a magazine that we're producing in North Palaca. And one of the, one of the advertisers in our, in our magazine is Ride Solution. And I'm not sure if you all are aware of what's going on with Ride Solution. And I'm not having available services for North Palaca since December the 1st. And I just wanted to be someone to kind of raise that, that point that North Palaca. Is in need of that essential service that Ride Solution provides for, for us. So that's what I wanted to bring up and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Best?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for hearing me again tonight. We have a mental health crisis. Zenny Best is my name. I live at 200 Hayes Drive, Interlatia in Florida. The topic I'd like to bring across first is the mental health of our communities. We have an agency in our grasp. The closest agency for mental health recovery is in Gainesville. It's called the Opportunity Center. We had Opportunity Center, we had four eight years ago. Now we have 13 in our, in our state now. The highest, we are the, if we develop this clubhouse in northeast Florida, we'll be the clubhouse at the highest point of Florida. So far, and I think that's important because the people up here, we don't. Get the services you need. You see them walking the street, no place to live. Asking for money on the corner. It does not have to happen. With the GOC, with the Gainesville Opportunity Center, we can take care of you there. We need a center here in Palaca. It does work. We have mental health agencies like Stuart Marching. If they're not getting paid, they do nothing for you. I had a kid that was in Stuart Marching, the drop-in center even. He got arrested. He was trying to find housing. Three years. He got arrested. After he got arrested, he brought it up to the facility that had him arrested. He got housing, but he had to become arrested first. This is not the process. Please help the people that can't help themselves. We can't help ourselves because we know the services are here, but the services are so scattered. We don't know who to ask. There is no one here. We don't have a mental health provider to give us information in our county here. Outside of Stuart Marching. And Stuart Marching does nothing unless they're getting paid. You have to join them first before they do anything for you. International Clubhouse, you walk in and something else is very important. If you go to, a year ago, you could go to a clubhouse, you wake up in China, you could say. I belong to a clubhouse. They get you food, housing, medication, and all the services they have. They won't ask you, do you want to go home from China? But if you say to them, I belong to the clubhouse, I want to get back home, then all 50 states the same way. They will get you back home. We lost that here. We lost it. So much stuff is out here for people that just don't know how to take care of themselves. Alcohol, drugs. Just being mentally ill, your parents being sick, off the alcohol, they braze you. We need the services and the services are here. Please, grass.
Thank you. Wrap it up, please, Mr. West.
Okay, I have another comment from another piece of paper.
He did submit a separate card.
The the four.
You you only get one.
You only get one. You only get one. And I was just explaining.
Okay, see, I put everybody in front of me.
Excuse me, but we only, because we want to give everybody else an opportunity, Mr. Best. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Myers?
I signed up to to speak to a certain.
Okay, it doesn't say that, but we will, we will wait for that then. Thank you. Mr. Spell?
Jacob Spells, 5019 Querella Avenue. Last meeting. There was a lot of. Phone calls made about. The separation of power and shutting the city down. And the phone call was directed to the people that they shouldn't have been directed to. And we don't need. People that live in the big house. To tell us what to do and how to do when they had the opportunity to change and do things and they didn't do anything. So we're not living in the 30s and the 40s. We're living in the 20, 23. So. We have to move beyond that because one person don't make all the rules and suggest. What all the people in Palaca do, especially on the north side. Because society have made it possible for all of us. That want to move from this north side to the south side, we can. So. We all are servants to our logic. When you may be wrong, I might be right, but then we should come to the center. And get an understanding before. Your opinion is. Evaluated and think that you should. Make the decision for others when you had the opportunity to do it yourself. We don't have to account to the man in the big house anymore. We all can read, do arithmetic. And do whatever. So. We think that the phone calls was made to the wrong person. They should run their business. The city. Council should run their business. You know, if you don't like the music, turn the station. You don't like the show, turn the channel. And you don't like the way you're sitting in the room, but you seat at another chair. So. I think the phone calls that, and the people that were so concerned seemed that they. Could come here and discipline the commission from the words that they said, which I don't think was. Giving them respect for their job and. They were only trying to lay out a pattern that. The power that they have was being taken away. No, they wasn't doing that. They was only trying to show where. You can't take my power and what I'm doing, I'm not going to shut the city down. I just want to maintain my power so I can continue to do what I need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Brown?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Pamela Brown, 142 Live Oak Street, San Mateo, Florida. I am here this evening on behalf of the Family Life Center Food Pantry. Our director, Michelle Session, could not be here this evening. She had planned to come to speak with you all and ask me if I would come and share with you. In our effort to provide food for the holidays. We are trying to collect 100 turkeys to give away. And with our food pantry, with all the other items that we have. And we are asking that if you could support this effort, we would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Saying no, we close public comment. Do we have any commission or staff response?
Have a question with regards to the Ride Solution situation. I know that so, that does not fall on us solely. That decision was made by, if I'm recollecting correctly, by the county commission, correct?
Ultimately, I think that we're looking for some, I think people are looking for some advocacy for the service. Yes, there were funding cuts, and I think really the commission takes the lead and advocacy to bring some of that funding back for Ride Solutions.
Okay, so being that the service that's being affected the most is City of Palaca, our north side, what can we do to make sure that we bring the advocacy component to our county commission as a whole, a unified effort to say we need Ride Solution on the north side of Palaca? And that's a question that posed to my counterparts.
Well, I think that that's something that we need to explore. But on the, on the, on the flip side of that, we need to understand the no costs associated with providing
Understandable.
Providing those services. And, 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 and if it's something that the city need to get involved in in order to be able to provide for our, our, our residents who need those services, then those that could be a line item in, 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 in the budget that, you know, in, in our budget. Whether we, if it's not budgeted this year, maybe it could be budgeted next year. But again, that'll be something that we can decide.
I would love for us to facilitate a conversation and make this an item. Because of course, we can't make any formal things tonight that we bring this up on our next agenda for, that we're able to kind of discuss at length. We know tonight we have a very lengthy
Agenda.
Agenda. And of course, we can't take any official action during this portion. But I would love to see this come back so that we can formulate some or bounce around ideas so that we can see what we can do to make sure that we give all of our citizens access to public transportation.
And at that point, we can have all the information regarding why, what, what funding was often.
And I would actually encourage to have them come to us as well as we facilitate this conversation.
Thank you. Anybody else on Ride Solutions anymore input? Thank you. Any additional commission responses?
I do have a question with regards to Ms. Brown and the Cavalry Life Center and their request. Is that something that we can do? And in the event that we can do it, how can we do it? Because I do believe that the Life Center Food Pantry is open to all of the City of Palaca residents and county.
And, and I'm just asking because I'm not certain of this. The collection that's going on now, City Hall, Ms. Krantz, where is that intended to go?
That, 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 sorry, that food is actually going to the Bread of Life per resolution passed by the City Commission.
Okay.
And the box is presently out front?
Okay.
Are we able to? Are we able to give from our personal, not personal, are we able to give from the
Commission of Budgets?
Commission of Budgets that we were allocated?
We don't have a lot of restrictions on those. Those are typically for special events. But if that's how you want to, I mean, it is the Christmas season. I, I think that that would be a reasonable allocation of your, your budget.
Okay, then so in that case, individually, we can talk to Ms. Cotty about the amounts. We'd love to.
I believe it would need to be a motion passed by the commission, and it would have to be an emergency motion. I don't believe we.
I don't know. We don't have to have motions on those special event funds anymore.
No, we changed that.
We passed it already.
That's correct.
I don't believe that.
Let's not have, let's not do this in front. This is not the time or the place.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Anything else in terms of comments and commission of input? General?
Oh, yeah, I do. Being that the transportation hub is actually getting a lot of attention and a lot of money, funding. I don't see how we don't have transportation going on the north side. The, the hub is located on the north side, but the folk can't catch rides? That's something that we really need to really need to address from our funding sources. And I think that shouldn't be hard to do because if we're talking about I think it was eight million for the transportation hub, we should have funds immediately that can go and help them through their dilemma this year on what's already cut. So can we look into those funds and the opera funding? Don't forget about that.
Yeah, and I think the opera funding might, I don't know about the other being as viable. The other was a grant, and there are specific requirements around that, but we'd have to look into that. Opera sounds like a more immediate possibility, and I think the help needs to be immediate because the service has already been cut.
Next agenda, our next meeting is when?
January. We have one in January as well.
Is there a poss, and I really hate to do this, but there's a lot of, we may need to call emergency meeting to address this, especially during the holiday season. A lot of people are trying to get around the City of Palaca, not only to get things for their family, but getting to doctor's appointments and things of that nature. And that's most essential to me, that they're able to get back and forth for healthcare needs more than anything. I, I would beg my commission to list, take in consideration having an emergency meeting where we bring this to the table and we talk this thing out.
Second, you, you don't have to beg commissioners. It's something that is, is a true.
The beg only came because of urgency.
We appreciate, we appreciate that. But yeah, we certainly looking forward to doing whatever we can to help complete those services.
Commissioner McCaskill?
I make sure that we have the key stakeholders at the table in this process. We can make sure that we immediately address their needs.
So that a motion? I would make that a motion and that we give staff direction to reach out to those respective parties, get their availability, and come back to us as soon as possible so that we could have that emergency meeting.
Your motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposition? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
We, we have to make that as a, a emergency item. I think we have to, we have to make that motion as an emergency item to be added before we can take action on it.
Well, we can, as far as us calling the meeting, we can do that. We can, it can either be called by the mayor or two or more of the commissioners.
I think he meant this specific motion that we just passed. He's saying.
What we just voted, what we just voted.
No, I think we're also, Ms. West.
So what, what was just approved, or at least my understanding is that you have given us direction to reach out to key stakeholders to get their availability and schedule an emergency meeting based on their availabilities. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes. Anything else? Now we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone wants pulled? Commissioner McCaskill?
Mayor, item C is requested.
I was going to say that when it came to my turn. Yes.
See?
No. Commissioner Borum?
Do K for discussion.
I'm sorry, what did you say on this?
K, K for discussion.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Jones? I need G, H, O, P. And U.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell? And staff requested pulling C.
I make a motion.
Tabled in C rather than should say.
All right, I make a motion.
But, but can we actually talk about C first?
The staff has requested that it be tabled.
To next. So we will talk about it, but not tonight.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass all items on the consent agenda with the exception of C, G, H, O, P, O, and U.
And K.
Okay.
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 Okay, he said you. Okay. So have we got that correct, Ms. Krantz? So we.
I thank you. I have motioned by Commissioner Borum to pass all items except C, G, H, O, P, U, N, K.
Point of clarity, please, directed to Attorney West with regards to C. Kid, does he need to go ahead and specify, even though it's not being passed, that we're requesting that it be tabled as a part of his motion?
Yeah, I would clarify that it be tabled, so it's on the next agenda.
So I, I would like to make a clarification on item C to be tabled for our next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. So with that said, we're going to G, Ms. Cotty?
Item G, correct?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, allow me to present to you Resolution number twenty twenty-three R two seventy-five, Resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the execution of a renewal agreement with P F M as financial advisor for the City of Palaca and providing for Governor Searson.
So move.
Okay. Do I say something?
We don't vote until after.
Till after she presents. Go ahead, Ms. Cotty.
Okay, thank you. This is, I'm in the midst of securing funding as finance director for the Public Works purchase of a building. And that takes place in, at this moment, the contract says January thirty-one of next year. So I'm trying to secure funding. Our budget has placed this amount at three million, even though the purchase is less than that. But I want to be certain that the funds are here at the time of, you know, that we're supposed to pay for it. So even though I've reached out to various banks and financial institutions, P F M has served the City of Palaca since two thousand eighteen. They were renewed again in two thousand twenty-one. I do have a copy of the two thousand twenty-one renewal, which does allow the agreement, the option to renew in twelve months intervals. So with this particular project, even though we've done well with our recent financing projects, I feel that this financial consulting can be very helpful to the city. They have almost about fifty or sixty banks that they work with nationwide. Yes, I have secured some rates, but I really believe, after meeting with Jeremy, that they would be able to lower the rate that I've also found. So I'm, I'm recommending or suggesting that the city consider giving them another one-year renewal. The price is, is very minimal. It's fifteen thousand up to like a three million dollar financing agreement. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Cotty?
Yeah. I guess I don't understand why we need that financial advisor. And can you tell me in the past what, how have they been helping?
Yes.
People who are going to spend fifteen thousand dollars to tell us.
Right.
How are we going to spend the money?
Okay, so I did not actually go back to look at the various projects that they helped with. Okay, I really didn't. But I did sit down and meet with them and secure their proposal, which shows all of the various cities that they've helped. Now, the way how they helped Palaca in the past, I know they were helping with other purchases, but I'm sorry, I cannot answer it precisely tonight.
I would like to table this and come back to, we get some clear understanding. I know it's only fifteen thousand dollars, but I would like to know the scope of what they actually do, other than telling you how to get money in which we get money.
Right. Well, what they have done in the past is they've been very successful in securing money at the lowest interest rate. And that's what I'm really interested in. The recent activity that I was able to consummate with a financial institution, I was able to get the rate down to, I think, what was that, like five point four two percent? And I started at about a six point nine five percent. So that took a lot of effort. I, I interacted with about six or eight different institutions. But with a with, with us possibly spending three million dollars, I don't want to only rely on myself. I want more expertise, particularly with an entity that has about fifty financial institutions at their beck and call. So that's the reason, once I found out that, that used them before. That was my reason for pursuing it.
Thank you. Any additional questions of Ms. Cotty?
I just want to thank her for her, her efforts in those regards and with the reduction that you
Yeah.
got so far. And if we can do better, that'd be great. You probably already saved over fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that, that was the other reason too, because that fifteen thousand, I, I did a cost calculation that if I could get him to get us even, you know, point something that the fifteen thousand would be taken care of by the reduction of the interest rate. However, I am not going to stop my efforts. Okay, I'm going to keep on tracking and try to get a slower interest rate.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Or we had a recommendation to table. Do we have a motion?
It's on the agenda for approval.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. H? Chief Taylor?
Evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Item H is for the execution of a grant with the USDA. It is a seventy-five twenty-five grant to get us a new ladder truck and a new fire truck. By the time we get this, secure the grant and get a truck built, we're going to be at a ten-year mark for our engines that are in service now. So that'll put us back into the right category, move those into the backup spots and put out the new first outs.
Any questions of Chief Taylor?
Good explanation.
Madam Mayor, I apologize that I wasn't.
Yeah, that's okay.
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the submission of a U S Department of Agricultural Community Facilities grant to fund the purchase of the fire trucks in the amount of two million eighty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is one million five hundred sixty-six dollars, six hundred ninety-six dollars grant request and five hundred and twenty-two, two thirty-two city match. And authorizing execution and settlement of all necessary documents in connection therewith and providing for Governor Searson.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to K, Ms. Krantz?
Thank you. Item C, send to eighty. A resolution of the City of Palaca, authorizing the purchase of a Kubota Skid steer S V L seventy-five Z H F W C West Florida Coast equipment in the amount of sixty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents per publicly bid for Sheriff's Association contract F S A twenty-three Q U twenty-one dot O, providing for Governor Searson.
Thank you. Mr. McCant?
Good afternoon. I put this request in for this Skid steer, for this equipment, because there's a need for it for us at the wastewater plant. When we needed it in the past, we have borrowed it from Public Works. Dale's been really good at helping us to use that equipment. But the problem is, it's, it's used in the wastewater plant. We move bio solids. So when we're done, it has to go through an extensive cleaning and desanitation project, a process to bring it back to anybody else in the city. Besides that, we have, we don't, we're, we're not capable of unloading trucks when we have receive equipment. Um, we don't have a loading dock. We have no heavy equipment out there. We received drums, fifty-five kilon drums of polymer and other chemicals. These things weigh eight-hundred pounds. We have been forced in the past to put tires on the ground to offload these barrels. Um, we do request lift gates for deliveries, but they can't always facilitate that. Um, most of the time they can, but there's times that we cannot wait for the chemical, and they do not have a lift gate available. Um, so we are, again, forced to offload in, in ways that are, I don't, I don't think is quite safe or, 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 or good. Um, in addition, with the biosolids project being finished up next year, we will need this equipment to move things around the, the treatment plant. Um, at, at times when we have a need for it, Dale's already, his crew's already using this already, and we, we cannot get it because they are using their equipment. Um, I put this money in our capital request at the beginning of the budget year. Um, so that's, that's why I feel like we have a need for this equipment at the wastewater plant.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. McCant?
Um, I would like to say it's rare that they come before us, uh, with a need, and for him to come, I know it's definitely a need. Um, we can make sure that we provide for every other department, and I want to make sure that we provide for them as well.
Thank you. With that said, entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
Thank you.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to O, Ms. Krantz and Mr. McNair.
Item twenty-three R284. A resolution of the City of Palaka, Florida, authorizing the execution of Pasero Associates Work Order Number two-thousand-twenty-three-seventy for the Wildlife Hauser Site Visit Project, and in amount not to exceed sixteen thousand four hundred. This is a hundred percent grant funded and providing for Governor Service.
So move.
No, let, let Mr. McNair speak again.
Thank you there, Commissioner. Uh, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, uh, essentially, this project here is one of, um, two operational specific projects. So this is working with Pasero, uh, to look at assessing the airport property or the footprint of the airport and identify what are our existing wildlife, uh, threats, issues, those kind of things. Obviously, aircraft and animals on runways do not mix, so ever so often, airports need to do their assessment. I don't recall us having one in place, so this is the first step of identifying what we're working with and then moving on with how do we mitigate it and manage through it.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. McNair?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Pass unanimously. Stay put, Mr. McNair.
I will.
Um, P, Ms. Krantz?
Item twenty-three R285. A resolution of the City of Palaka, Florida, authorizing the execution of Pasero Associates Work Order twenty-two-three-sixty-nine through the Airport Obstruction and Tree Removal Project, in an amount of not to exceed seventy-three thousand two hundred. This is a hundred percent grant funded and providing for Governor Service.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, very similar project, operationally specific. So this is essentially working with Pasero and from administrative project management, management, those kind of things of clearing the different tree obstructions that we've identified. We have more so F-dot inspectors have identified that exist at each end of the runways. With the Palaka Airport, we have two, primary nine-two-seven, and obviously crosswind seventeen-thirty-five. So over the years, obviously vegetation grows, and every time we have our annual inspection, uh, they come in, measure the hazards. So we've gotten to a point where we need to resolve the hazards. So this fee that we're asking for is to work with them to help us with a much larger project of removing the trees. And as the city clerk mentioned, this project is a hundred percent, and we're, we're thankful for, you know, those resources. So this, this project will make us a lot safer, um, than we are.
Thank you. Any further questions of Mr. McNair? Okay, with that, do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we're going on to you, Ms. Krantz.
Twenty-nine, Madam Mayor. A resolution of the City of Palaka approving a preliminary plat for subdivision of the Palaka Mall property at four-hundred Nowherth State Road, nineteen Park, Florida, parcel number zero-two-ten, twenty-six-four-zero, twelve-sixty-four-zero, and providing for Governor Service.
Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the applicant has, uh, informed me that they would like to table this until the next meeting. They have an emergency with the surveyor, and there knows, there are some issues with the plat, the comments that need to be addressed. Um, but this, like I said, the surveyor had an emergency, and they'd like to table it to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we table this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. With that, we're gonna move on to public hearing.
Item K, I believe, Madam Mayor.
Please?
We need K. Five, that was the five.
Did I skip?
No.
That's what I thought. Okay, sorry.
Madam Mayor, we did pass item J on the agenda, and that is a document that needs to be signed by all of the commission. May I please ask that the commission please sign that loan paperwork prior to leaving tonight?
Yes, so I'll pass it down. It's right here. We pass it down to Commissioner Campbell first, and we'll work our way through.
The closing on that item is tomorrow.
And if I may add to that, the closing is actually tomorrow. So that's why we need the signatures.
While the commission is passing that document around, Madam Mayor, may I ask Mr. McNair if Mr. Billingsley is in the audience that we have just appointed to the Airport Advisory Board?
Sure.
He had told me he was gonna be present. He, he left. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Okay, on to public hearings, um, twenty-two-three thirty-eight. Ms. Krantz?
Presented to the Commission for Second Reading is Ordinance Number twenty-two-three thirty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Palaka, Florida, creating Section two-fifty-four of the City's Code, implementing the state statutory mandate to prepare business impact statements prior to the adoption of proposed ordinances pursuant to Section one-sixty-six oh-four-one-four for Florida statutes, providing findings, adopting a business impact statement, procedures, requirements, and exemptions, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date, and providing for Governor Service.
Thank you. Ms. West?
Sure. Commissioners, this is the second reading of this, uh, mandatory statute imposed by the legislature, this last legislative section that requires all ordinances to now include a business impact statement. There are broad exceptions, um, to this, this rule, but we, we do need to go ahead and get this ordinance passed, so we comply with state statute.
Thank you. With that said, I want to open the floor to public comment. If anybody here, um, wants to speak public comment in regards to this ordinance, seeing now we closed public comment, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous, thank you. Um, B, Ms. Walsh, and go ahead, Ms. Krantz, sorry.
Sorry, I have to scroll through the staff report. Ordinance Number twenty-two-three eighteen, presented to you for second reading. An ordinance of the City of Palaka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as part of the south half of the northeast quarter, plus the part of the northwest quarter, official records book seven fifty-nine, page three oh-six, official records book ten seventy-four, page eighteen nineteen, parcel number nine-ten, twenty-six-four-zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-zero-one, seven-nine-nine-three, St. John's Avenue, which is approximately eighty-eight-point-fifty-three acres contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaka, providing an estimate of population impacts, providing an effective date, and providing for Governor Service.
Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the second reading for this, um, case. I wanted to let you know, of course, that it's all been heard by the planning board and previously by the commission. All of the outside agencies that were required to have it reviewed have, uh, come back with no comments. So there shouldn't be any other issues, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Walsh? I'm gonna open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing now closed public comment, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similarly, on this item, presenting to you Ordinance Number twenty-two-three nineteen for second reading. An ordinance of the City of Palaka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adoptive comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, which is greater than fifty acres in size, from Putnam County Urban Reserve, UR, to City Palaka High Density Residential, HDR, and to Commercial Comm for the following property, seven-nine-nine-three, St. John's Avenue, Black, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven, part of the south half of the northeast quarter, plus northwest quarter, official records book seven fifty-nine, page three oh-nine, official records ten seventy-four, page eighteen nineteen, eighteen nineteen, sorry, parcel number nine-ten, twenty-six-four-zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-zero-one, approximately eighty-eight-point-fifty-three acres contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaka, providing an effective date, and providing for Governor Service.
Any additional information, Ms. Walsh?
We've stopped including legal descriptions in the captions of the ordinance.
But they had so much fun hearing me read them.
Okay, opening up to public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Seeing now closed public comment, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Um, on to the next item.
It's, it's actually still the same item, Madam Mayor, but the next ordinance regarding this property is Ordinance Number twenty-two-three twenty for second reading. An ordinance of the City of Palaka, Florida, providing that the zoning be amended with respect to the following parcel of land greater than fifty acres in size, from Putnam County Agricultural Act to the City of Palaka Land Unit Development, mobile home, conventional home, residential, and commercial, but R four C one for the following property, seven-nine-nine-three, St. John's Avenue, Black, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven, part of the south half of the northeast quarter, plus part, part of the northwest quarter, official records book seven fifty-nine, page three oh-nine, official records ten seventy-four, page eighteen nineteen, parcel number nine-ten, twenty-six-four-zero-zero-zero-one, zero, 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 one, approximately eighty-eight-point-fifty-three acres contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaka, providing for an effective date, and providing for Governor Service.
Thank you. Um, opening up to public comment. Anybody here for public comment on this? Seeing now closed public comment, do we have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Um, and this was my oversight, the, uh, H, there was a request to move, um, item H earlier up. And here we go. So item H, Ms. Krantz?
Thank you. H is twenty-two-three forty-eight. Madam Mayor, presenting to you twenty-two-three forty-eight for first reading. An ordinance of the City of Palaka, amending provisions of a planned unit development known as Crystal Cove RV Resort Phase One, located at one-twenty-one Crystal Cove Road, to remove the requirements for a swimming pool, spa, or electric facilities, allow up to thirty percent of the built sites to be used as a park model recreation vehicle, and revise the maximum length of occupancy to no more than a hundred and eighty days in any twelve consecutive month period, providing an effective date, and providing for Governor Service.
Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, ma'am. As noted, this is a request to revise the existing planned unit development plan for the Crystal Cove Phase One project. So this is on the north side of Crystal Cove Road, across the street from the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven acre project that was recently approved this summer. Um, what the applicant is requesting is to make the provisions of the development plan for this phase consistent with the provisions of the development plan for the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven acre parcel. To that effect?
Do you have anything you could put up so we can see what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you have people out here that have no, no clue.
Sunny, do you have the staff report? There it is, okay. So it's that portion of the property on the north side of Crystal Cove Road. And then the proposed amendments are to change the allowable use this to allow up to thirty percent of the built sites to be used as a park model recreational vehicle, which is equivalent to what was, was permitted on the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven acres across the street. Um, they would also like to remove the support structures that were required in that, uh, previous amendment or development plan by removing the in-ground pool, spa, or similar facility as well as the, uh, sorry, just the in-ground pool, spa, or similar facility, so that people that are using this RV resort portion would go across the street and use the one on the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven acres.
Across the street, the wooded area that says C-one-A, behind that, is that what you're talking?
I'm sorry, to the south. To the south, that large area across the street, to the south side of Comfort, uh, Crystal Cove Road. I keep getting this confused. And then the third thing is to change the length of occupancy from, uh, fifteen days maximum, uh, to the same as the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven acre parcel. It would be a maximum of a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, is the, um, applicant here?
They are.
Please give your name and address.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy Eby, ICP. I live at twenty-three twenty-three Southwest Hundred-and- Twelve Street, Gainesville. I'm the agent for the applicant. I'm a planning director for JB Pro, who is the agent for the applicant. The applicant is also here.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
So they're gonna be, subject property is gonna have the, the main RV part there for the maximum of a hundred and eighty days, right?
So, yes, so the app, this application is to bring it consistent with the larger parcel. Um, as Ms. Walsh mentioned earlier, we had this approved earlier this summer. Um, and we are looking to be able to unify this in a more cohesive manner so that the parcels, uh, can function like each other. The amenity, if you recall, there's a very large amenity area on the south parcel that includes a bar order walk, includes swimming pools, a community center, and other, uh, playground, park facilities, a dark park. So this north parcel would just be, um, used for RV purposes. And then all of the amenities would be to the south. The planning commission asked that we add sidewalks, uh, and we are willing to do that. We also own the property in the yellow where the marina is, um, so that will be an additional amenity space. Uh, and we will provide a crosswalk and sidewalk to both sites, um, both the marina space as well as the larger campground space to the south. Um, and we would have done that even if the planning commission hadn't asked us to do it, but they did ask, so we are happy to, to accommodate that use. But all of the, the requested changes are, are the same standards that we have applied to the southern parcel.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
I understand that I, I'm not, I'm all for the changes that you brought for us, but I think that we had some extensive conversation about the number of days in stay. I just want to, um, have time to review the meetings that we had and the conversations that we had around the amount of time that we stayed about staying here. We did. We had some little.
So, so the reason that we're asking for the extension in stay to the hundred and eighty, and that is a hundred and eighty can, um, so you, we cannot have people in hundred and eighty days any more than a twelve-month period, so it's not just a hundred and eighty days. So it's not a hundred and eighty days you can leave and you can come back. It's a hundred and eighty days in a twelve-month period. Um, and per state statute, anyone who's staying at an RV report, resort has to maintain a log of residency. So those can, and those are publicly viewable, um, by the city. So at any time the city wanted to see that and make sure that, that, that hundred and eighty day is being enforced, you can do so. Um, and the reason that is, is because we see this property, uh, along the St. John's River and with all of the amenities that we are providing as being something that will be attractive to the, the, uh, the senior retirement snowbird population. Um, and they like to come and stay for an extended period. They don't like to really, uh, the market shows that these kind of residents like to come. They like to stay in a community, like to become a part of the community, um, and they're not looking to go from campground to campground. So that is the reason that we're asking for the hundred and eighty-day, six-month period is to accommodate who we feel is one of our primary markets, which is the senior, um, vacation. Excuse me.
And thank you for your reasoning, but I just want to make sure that, I want to look back at our meeting notes that we've had in previous meetings because we had extensive conversation around this, and I just want to make sure that, uh, all of the, what we decided the first time, um, there are no changes that I will admit as a commissioner. I want to see the, the notes, the meeting, the minutes of meeting. I'm sorry. We had meetings and extensive conversation about this, so I'm glad that y'all are doing this, but I just want to make sure, so.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I would like to address.
Yeah, I'm going to get to you, Mr. Myers. Yeah, yeah, I want to open the floor. Anybody from the commission have any additional questions?
I would like to hear what public does say.
Well, I was going to do that.
Why?
But open the floor to public comment, Mr. Myers did submit a card, could you please come in and give your name and address for the record?
Charles Myers, 244 Crystal Cove Drive, Palaca. You're right, there was a long discussion about length of time that people could stay. And of course, this has changed considerably now because you have the 177 acres that is going to be developed, and I don't know, I heard before 300 RV parkers? Anyway, hundreds of RV parks and then 100 tent campers, something that hasn't, I don't think has been addressed very well is traffic, which is going to be a nightmare unless the roads are modified, you've got to crossing, you've got to go across the CSX tracks, and that's another complicating factor. And I could foresee a lot of people coming and lining up with RVs towing cars, and that is a pretty long line. So that's going to be a problem, and we also talked about the length of stay, and it was approved by the board that it would be two weeks, and now we're going to change it to six months. That's a pretty substantial change, we're not happy with that, I don't think, in the neighborhood. I got in touch with, we were represented before by Douglas Law Firm, Charlie Douglas represented us before the commission, and I got to him and got him to make a summary of what had gone on in the past, which I got in February of 2021. I provided a copy of that to the former city manager and to the planning director at some time in the past. It summarizes all these things that we're talking about, but I think you need to be very careful here, and what you're doing, we've got a nice neighborhood that has been paying a lot of taxes to the city, and which is going to change substantially, and I'd like to have the change made as painless as possible, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment on this particular topic? Yes, sir, come on up and please fill out a yellow card afterward. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Rick Leary, I live at 206 Crystal Cove Drive. My wife and I own the property, which is the one that is immediately adjacent to the 11 acres that you had up on the screen a minute ago, so we would probably be most directly impacted by any development that occurs. We observed what's transpired with that property over the last several years, and we've even participated in some hearings, we rather reluctantly accepted the decisions that were made, touting this as a high-scale RV park, and that would have certain protections for surrounding properties in there, we hate, we don't want to see those protections eroded, we are most concerned probably about the 180-day occupancy timeframe, that is, as Mr. Myers indicated, a radical change that you, I gleaned from the comments that that had been approved for the 177 acres, but we would ask that you remain steadfast and hold the occupancy to 15 days on that 11-acre property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? I'm getting to read Matthews.
Reed Matthews, 111 East Greg Lane, East Palaca, I'm just here to echo what Mr. Myers, Mr. Leary here said, as most of you know, I'm a realtor, you know, don't think that 180-day stays, my mom lives in the neighborhood for one, full disclosure, 180-day stays, you know, we got million-dollar homes, 400,000, million-dollar homes in there, and driving back, you know, right now, yes, they're proposing, proposing a nice RV resort, but there's, one, there are two separate parcels, they're currently owned by the same person, that doesn't mean that they continue, they have to be, you know, in perpetuity. Right now, the hotel across the street, not sure if you know, but it's pretty much a migrant camp right now. So when you drive through there, you already have that there, you don't want more of the same, potentially, you know, everybody says, oh, we want to attract these, you know, snowbirds, that's what they want to attract, right now, today, that's plan, you know, economies change, owners change, plans change, so I think that six, you know, going from 15 days to six months is just, it's a big ask, and I don't think it should be approved. You know, if they combine the parcels and want to have the amenity center, I don't think that's the big problem, you know, on the other side of the road, but the 15 days to 180 days, that's huge, and that's my concern.
Thank you, is there anybody else here for public comment on this particular gender item?
I didn't sign up, can I speak?
I'm sorry, what?
She didn't sign up, please, I'll speak.
That's, please come up, yes, please come up and fill out the card afterward.
I'm Catherine Rash, I live at 213 Crystal Cove Drive, and anyway, it's a major concern for the length of stay also, I'm a salon stylist here, and one of my customers that is a RV-er, she said that she has visited RV resorts or RV parks that have long-term and some that only have the short stay, and she said, Kathy, you need to fight that, we have visited the ones that are long-term, and there's a lot of riffraff there, she said, I wouldn't want to, we don't even want to go back to those anymore, but what we instill today, it's only, I mean, things are only going to get, they're going to want more and want more, and in years to come, things always do deteriorate, so if we're going to start with less now, what are we going to have in another 10 years? I mean, I'm a single woman, I feel safe there, people do take care of their place, like they said, we do pay a lot of property taxes too, if this place comes and brings our subdivision down, are we going to get to pay less property taxes? And if the RV resort isn't as nice, are they going to pay less property taxes? This is in the city limits, this isn't off in the county, this is in the city. I wish the people coming would even consider, if they're interested in long-term people, why don't they try something like Villa Farms or something like that, that people do stay, I would rather that than, you know, anyway, anyway, I'm just very nervous about it, that is my nest egg, you know, I don't have a big nest egg, but I have a home, and I'd like to preserve its, and feel safe, thank you.
Is anybody else? Yeah, well, we've got to cut one second, yes. It's not calling, but that's okay. And please fill out a card, name and address.
Larry Watcher, 787 Cricklewood Terrace, Lake Mary, Florida. I'm trying to wrap my head around this, I'm one of the investors, and we're not wanting to have something low-class, we're putting millions of dollars in this, so it's actually the opposite, and we're going to see that it's not going to be anything that's, I think people would worry about, especially the investors, is going to make sure that it's not going to turn into that. And also, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to get, you got snowbirds, retired people, usually pretty well off financially, it's going to be 60 to 70% of your market, short class, or just what's, what I'm hearing, what people's wanting, they're trying to propose is to try to keep to 15 days, is what's going to be more traffic. It's actually going to be more traffic in and out versus you go there and you stay, just a bunch of retired people, and I do RV, and snowbirds are not bad people, retired people are not, not bad people, really not.
Thank you, Mr. Evans?
Yes. My name is Gilbert Evans, and I reside at 251 Crystal Cove Drive here in Palaca, Florida, and I must reiterate some of the concerns of my fellow neighbors, I do feel as though changing the length from 15 days to six months is unreasonable. I believe as one commissioner said, this was a point of contention when these, when this discussion originally began, and no one in Crystal Cove really agreed with it, but we acquiesced and we accepted the 15-day, but going to six months, I believe, is unreasonable, and also, I believe Mr. Myers talked about the traffic, we already have issues with the railroad track there, and bringing in more traffic, especially with the 177 acres that's across the street, and this is just going to be a nightmare, so I ask on behalf of the neighbors and the taxpayers in Crystal Cove that you don't approve that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment on this topic? Seeing none, we're closing public comment. You had, Mr. Commissioner Borum, did you want to say something?
They've already spoke, spoke to some of the concerns that are related to safety as it relates to the railroad track and additional traffic, I mean, with that number of people from a maximum capacity standpoint for both locations, I think we need to really take traffic congestion in consideration and see how it would impact the ingress egress out of those neighborhoods in addition to noise among everything else, we just need to take a closer look at it, is make sure that we're not doing a detriment to the community.
And the applicant has returned, do you want to give us additional information before we ask further questions?
Yes, I would, first of all, I'd like to address some of the concerns that were raised by, by the community, and then I would also like to proffer a solution for one of the major concerns that we heard. In relationship to traffic, the length of stay, having a longer length of stay would reduce the number of RV units that are coming in and out of the unit, because obviously people are going to stay for a longer period. Also, in regards to the concerns regarding stacking, we do have a requirement per the other application that we provide for extensive stacking on-site, most of the stacking comes when people are checking in, and we have provided a number of opportunities and options, including a very large parking lot that is in the, on the major area, which is the site that people, even for this small site, would be checking into their units, so the stacking is not something that should be a concern, because we've already addressed that as relationship to the requirements for the PUD on the larger property. We did have a neighborhood, it should be noted, we had a neighborhood meeting, which we had but one person attend, and that was an adjacent property owner who has a business who was in support of the project, and that was a voluntary neighborhood workshop that we held. The final thing that we'd like to proffer is, we understand the concern about having people, having these become something that people would be longer and degrade the RV because they're there longer and they're, it's not well-kept, we would be willing to put in between now and the second reading of this work with staff to develop a maintenance standard, which would allow for city staff through code enforcement to be able to come onto the property and evaluate the site to ensure that any maintenance issues are addressed, to allow for maintenance, just like you would have with a code enforcement of a single-family home or any other type of building in the city, and allow for any concerns for this to be maintained, we expect this to be maintained at a very high level, this is not meant to be something that, again, this is, we are looking to attract very expensive, million-dollar type RV units, but honestly, I have a, I have an RV unit, and I don't think, mine would require, would be allowed in there, because it's older than 10 years, so there are RV spaces that maintain this at a very high level, and as I said, we would be willing to proffer a maintenance agreement that allows for the city staff to, to make sure that the facility is maintained at the standard that the city is expecting it to be.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate them trying to compromise and come to a resolution, however, I am in total disagreement with the last part of the recommendation, what that's going to do is provide additional work for our staff, also, they have the ability that they will be able to pack up, leave, and then come back for an extended period of time, so I'm not in favor of that, because there are loopholes that they would be able to get out and get around that, and then still be able to come back and possibly get those conditions back in the same, which then will provide additional work for our employees, so I'm just totally against that flat-out, because there are loopholes.
I understand the concern about the additional city staff time, I have a master's in public administration, and I've spent a considerable career, my portion of my career in the public sector, however, I don't, again, I want to reiterate, this isn't a 180-day period, and that you can leave and come back, this is a 180-day period in a 12-month period.
No, I understand that, in my, you could be here two weeks, and then our staff come in and notice, they begin to do the administrative work to get the ball rolling, they leave as a result of being notified that they have things that they need to be able to come back with, they leave for a week, go to another campground, come back to our campground, get those living conditions back the way they were, then our group is going to have to go way back out, do everything, I just see a snowball effect, and I just don't see it really, I mean, of course, we, that's just one of my major concerns with this, outside of what Commissioner McCaskill has already brought forth, we've had extensive conversation, and then at some point, we have to listen to the people that reside in that area and who pays taxes faithfully to the city of Palaca. So again, I want to make sure that as we move forward, we take all of these things in consideration at the forefront, a lot of the individuals that are coming in, they don't have to live here permanently, we want to make sure that the people that live here permanently are comfortable in the residence in the area that they have spent so much money to reside in, and we don't want to make, we don't want it to dwindle as a result of us trying to, as a result of us trying to cater to snowbirds, when we have people who are want to cater to the sun.
Yeah, I appreciate that, sir, given that we have, can I, can I have a second with my client?
I don't think, I mean.
Well, because there's, there seems to, we have three, we have three components of this application, right? And I would like it, if, I'd like to find out, it seems like the biggest concern is on the length of stay component, so I'd like to talk to him about whether or not, how he wants to proceed with the other two, the other two components of this application. Because again, we want to work with you, we want to be this.
Saying that, we appreciate it, and we understand the compromise, but again, what we're compromising on is something that we've had extensive conversation, and then I think by the conversation that we've had tonight, that again, we're willing, we're not willing to budge at this moment, and again, we're not, if I'm, I know I'm not willing to make a decision right now with regards to that, and I'm only one person that sits behind this dais, our mayor has done a great job with directing us, so I would like to hear where we stand as individuals, so that we can go ahead and cut this conversation and make a.
And move forward, and I think I did hear from Commissioner McCaskill and Commissioner Campbell that they don't want to reach a decision this evening, Commissioner Borum?
Commissioner Borum, what?
What is your thoughts about moving forward or tabling, basically?
In my opinion, I think, I mean, that there's a state of unreadiness as it relates to what they're talking about, the 15-day to 180, I mean, if it, if the community had already agreed on the 15 days, I mean, then if they want 180, if it's unrest on the commission side of things, I think we need to table, table that item.
Ms. West, you were going to say something?
I just wanted to make sure public comment had been closed.
Okay.
So you're in full discussion.
I had closed it before.
Okay.
Yeah, I closed it before, sorry, yeah. Commissioner Jones?
I brought it to everybody's attention, I would like to hear from you, Phil.
I'm concerned because the people that live closest to it and will be at the burden of this are concerned about, and primarily, again, we're talking about the length of stay from 15 to 180, that's pretty, that's a quantum leap, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know if there's any middle ground, but at this point, I think that's an area of concern, and if we don't have all information and everybody's not comfortable, I think we may have to table, that's my.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We are willing to pull the 180-day and proceed with just the request for the park models and for the removal of the pool and spa, and accept that the, then maintain. And accept that the, then maintain, leave the hunt, the fifteen-day stay as a part of the original PUD.
I agree with Commissioner McCaskill. Bring, bring the information back to us. Our planning director will then give us further direction.
Okay. Commissioner Borm.
Well, my, my question is, I'm hearing different things now. So what was put before us was the, you was asking for a hundred and eighty days.
We had three.
You had the fifteen days that was already a part of the.
Right, we had three, we had asked for three changes. We had asked for one for a addition, allowing for the park models as, which is consistent with the way we have the larger parcel. We had asked for removal of the spa or pool from the smaller site because of the large amenity area that we have on the larger parcel. And then we were asking for a change from the fifteen days to a hundred and eighty-day stay as per the older, larger parcel. What we are asking for now, or what we are saying now, is that we will take off and not have the consideration for the, the length of stay. The length of stay will stay at fifteen days. And we will only ask for the change to the park model standard and the removal of the pool or spa-type amenity out of this smaller parcel. So that, so that the, see, because what we're hearing is, and we understand the citizens and this is their community, and we want to be good neighbors. If the hundred and eighty-day stay is something that the community does not feel comfortable with, we are willing to not proceed with that. We'll keep the fifteen-day on the smaller parcel. We still would like to have the pool and spa part removed and we would like to have the, the ability to do the park models. But other than that, we will, we would remove the biggest contention concern.
Well, just given all of the, the various amendments, modifications, you know, that's hard to kind of.
I, I understand.
Digest all of that in this meeting at least. And so I think if we table, like you said, if we table it and bring it back before us with whatever you have and have the staff, you know, look at, look at how it's going to impact the city. Then I think that we can make a better influence.
Okay. So at this point, I'm getting the sense that we still want to table.
I will make a motion, mayor, if you would so entertain it that we table this until our next meeting.
We have a motion and second to table, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. We're going on to item C in public hearings. Ms. Krantz.
That's the same people.
Well, that's, that's the one we just stopped, that's going away. She is different, she is different. They requested it, so we went out, we moved age up, so now we have to go back.
But that's the same, we're the same people, right?
See, it's the same people. No, but, no, so ahead, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, presenting to you ordinance number twenty-two-three thirty-five, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Placa, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as parcel thirty-seven-nine-two-six-four-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-five-one, located on Comfort Road, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palacko, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
All right.
First reading.
Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Casey Cheepe. I'm a, an urban planner here with the city of Palatka. I'm helping Ms. Walsh tonight with the large caseload that we have before you. Really quickly, I want to go through this because this is a refresher. Case PB twenty-three twenty-eight is actually a second reading that you all had heard last month. So just really quickly, this is a request to annex one parcel on Comfort Road, approximately nine-point-nine-six acres for the purpose of connecting to city water and sewerage systems. It's a request also to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Industrial to City of Palatka Industrial and to rezone the property from Putnam County Industrial Heavy to City of Palatka Light Industrial M1. The proposed project is, is for a, an RV repair and storage facility. It's actually not terribly far from the Crystal Cove property we just spoke about. If you look at page one, I don't know if we can pull up the, the staff report necessarily. Page one of the staff report, really quickly, the subject property is shown there.
Back to page two.
I'm sorry, yes, the page numbers are, yeah. Table one will also show you the, the current property and future land use and zoning. And just because this is a refresher, I just want to skip ahead to the recommendations on whichever page is the last page of the staff report. Just really quickly, the planning board heard this case November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. They unanimously agreed to, to the annexation, the future land use change as well as the zoning. Then, like I said before, you all had heard this case on November ninth. So the future land use was actually adopted there and staff recommends that, that the commission approve the ordinances for annexation on this as well as the rezoning. And I believe the applicant, Casey Reeve, stood here and fulfilled his requirement last time around. So I don't know if he's here tonight, but I can stand for questions or if the applicant happens to be here, they could as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Okay. Would you, do you want to come up? I don't know if there are any questions for you, but it is the second reading. And give your name and address for the record, please.
And I, I would like for a point of clarity that Ms. West brought us this to make sure that applicants are present because previously we were not doing that. So she is bringing us into compliance to make sure that we are, so hence the reason why they are here. And thank you for your availing yourself.
Thank you. And it is the second reading, you definitely have to for the first. But anyway, does anybody have any questions of the applicant? No questions? Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, closing public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, in the same item, same property, ordinance number twenty-two-three thirty-seven, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida be amended for Putnam County Industrial Heavy IH to City of Palaca Light Industrial M1 for the following property located on Comfort Road, Plac forty-three-two-one-seven-seven, parcel number thirty-seven-nine-two-six-four-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-five-one, providing for severability, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there any additional information? Well, okay, I'm going to open it to public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, closing public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All, uh, second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. Item D, presenting to you ordinance number twenty-two-three thirty-nine, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Placa, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as parcels two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two-one-zero-twenty-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-ones-four-zeros and zero-two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-two-four-zeros, located thirty-five-ten Reed Street, thirty-five-twenty-four Reed Street and one-fifteen Phillips Dairy Road, and contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Placa, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Any additional information? I'm going to open up to public comment. Is anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, closing public comment. Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Do you want to hear from Casey?
We don't. You don't.
I don't think he has more on this. We're trying to finish this off.
This is a new item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. I zoned out. Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, I can do, this is case PB twenty-three twenty-nine. This is a, this is a lot of information, so I'll try to condense it down. This is an annexation, sorry, it's a request to annex three adjacent parcels. There's one large parcel on Phillips Dairy Road as well as two smaller parcels on Reed Street. Totals three-point-three-seven acres for the purpose of connecting again to water, city water and sewerage systems to amend the future land use map and zoning designations as follows. If you look at the first page of the staff report, there's a table one there shows all of the land use is currently Putnam County Commercial. We're trying to change that to City of Palatka Commercial, or I should say, the applicant wants to change that to City of Palatka Commercial. The zonings are a little bit different out there. They all have a different zoning. So it's, you know, they're anywhere from C-two, C-three, industrial light IL. And we want to change the, the zoning to City of Palatka intensive commercial, all of them C-two. The potential future use for this site includes a chain restaurant or potentially a grocery store. I know Mr. John Jenkins couldn't make it with us this evening, so he's designated Terry Hancock, who can speak a little more specifically on the project. Really quickly, the parcels are contiguous with this Palatka city limits to the south along State Road one-hundred. Figure one shows, on the second page of the staff report, shows the, the subject property and the three parcels there. Table two, again, shows the surrounding uses for. That would be the, the subject property, the three parcels there. I believe the, the, the large parcel there is one, is marked one-one-five Phillips Dairy Road and the other two parcels are facing what is Reed Street. If we can go on to.
So, so the question, I got the question.
Sure.
So Phillips Dairy property is butted up to the Reed Street property. That makes it contiguous? Is that what you're saying?
It is. If there's a be developed, I believe they would all have to be rolled into one parcel together later on. But as of right now, we're just annexing.
So even if, so if they, if they build or design and build that the prop, the building faces Phillips Dairy, that means we respond to Phillips Dairy Road as law enforcement to that building. Is that right? Would that be right?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Just rolling on to table two, we just have a quick look at some of the surrounding uses. Again, for the zoning and the future land use nearby properties, quite a, quite a lot going on over there as far as different zonings. Page four of the staff report, table three is an estimated tax revenue that I just want to, first of all, thank Ms. Cardy and thank finance for putting so much time into that and figuring that, that out. I know that's something we want to include in our staff reports going forward and to this, and when we're briefing the commission. We do have an updated one. I just want to make it clear that we have an updated version here just for the, the purposes of how much tax revenue would actually come in if the parcels are not developed right away or immediately or if they're, if they're left the way they are when they do annex in. Really quickly, we have a couple of maps, figure two and figure three on page five showing the current and future land use. On page six, just wanted to highlight the annexation of this parcel will not contribute to urban sprawl as the parcels in question are contiguous to the city limits and would be considered traditional infill development. This would actually reduce an enclave over there. Page seven, figures four and figures five, again, the, the old zoning as well as the proposed zoning, I should say, the current zoning. Staff sees no problems or major issues with points A through Q on pages eight and nine. So just really quickly going to the recommendations. Again, the, the planning board heard this case on November fourteenth. They unanimously approved the annexation part as well as the future land use change and the, the zoning change. So with that, this is a first reading and staff recommends the commission adopt the changes to this property. And I can, again, the applicant has a designee here and I can also stand for questions.
With the applicant, is the applicant here, please? Could you come up? The applicant's representative, then please come up, give your name and address for the record.
I'm just, I'm his sister.
Okay.
My name is Terry Hancock. I live at thirteen forty-seven South State Road nineteen. He had to go out and town.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant's representative? I guess not. Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on this particular, uh, ordinance? Seeing none of those public comments. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Ms. Krantz.
Madam Mayor, the same item, ordinance number twenty-two-three forty, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than fifty acres in size, Putnam County Commercial CR to the City of Placa Commercial Com for the following property located at thirty-five-ten Reed Street, thirty-five-twenty-four Reed Street and one-one-one-five Phillips Dairy Road, Plac, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Parcel numbers two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-one-four-zeros and zero-two-ten-two-six-four-zeros-zero-two-six-zero-four-zeros, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Placa, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Anybody here for public comment on this particular item? Seeing none of this public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Again, same item, Madam Mayor, ordinance number twenty-two-three forty-one, an ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, providing that official zoning map of the city of Placa, Florida be amended from Putnam County Commercial General Light, C-two, Putnam County Commercial, C-three, and Putnam County Industrial Light to the City of Placa Intensive Commercial C-two for the following property located at thirty-five-ten Reed Street, thirty-five-twenty-four Reed Street and one-one-five Phillips Dairy Road, Plac, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. Parcel numbers two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-one-four-zeros and zero-two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-two-six-zero-four-zeros, providing for severability, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Opening to public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, closing public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm presenting to you guys, ordinance number twenty-two-three forty-two, an ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Placa, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as parcel number two-ten-two-six-four-zero-zero-one-ninety-zero-zero-one-zero, located at nine-oh-eight North State Road nineteen, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Placa, providing for an effective date and providing for severability.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, this is case PB twenty-three thirty-one. This is another first read. I know the pastor, Ed Wiles, is here as the applicant. This is a request to annex one parcel, approximately twenty-point-eight-two acres for the purpose of connecting again to city water and sewerage systems to also amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Service to City of Palatka Commercial and to rezone from Putnam County General Commercial and Agricultural to City of Palatka Intensive Commercial C-two in that, uh, commercial, commercial zone. The site is currently home to the Palatka Baptist Temple. And it's actually not terribly far from the last case, the other three parcels on Reed, near that same intersection. Page two on the staff report, figure one shows the subject sites highlighted in orange. Table one shows the surrounding property uses, again, actual use, the future land use, the zoning. Again, it's a, it's a busy area as far as different zoning. Page three, the proposed annexation borders the city limits along its southern frontage adjacent to State Road nineteen. It is contiguous. I just also wanted to point out as well, according to the Internal Revenue Services Tax Exempt Organization search tool, the Palatka Baptist Temple Incorporated is a five-oh-one-C-three tax-exempt religious organization. Therefore, this annexation will not bring new property tax revenue to the city of Palatka, but will provide fire fee, water, and sewerage revenues. And you can see that on the table on page four of the staff report. There's an estimated revenue from fire only. And just skipping ahead, page six of the staff report, the annexation of this parcel will not contribute to urban sprawl as the property is already in existing use. Again, it's temple, it's just literally connecting to water and sewer. So staff sees no issues with points A through Q on pages seven through nine. So I'm just going to skip ahead to the recommendations. Again, this was another case that was approved by the planning board meeting on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. They unanimously approved the annex, annexation, the future land use change as well as the zoning. So again, on these, this series of ordinances, staff recommends the commission adopt the changes. And like I said, the, the pastor is here if you have any questions about the, the site itself.
Please come up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
No, I have, I have some of staff.
Okay, well, we'll wait. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
So Pastor, you have twenty acres of land.
Yes, sir.
that we're going to exempt taxes.
It's already, yes.
Yeah, and so have we uh, done a analysis of what it cost us as far as the service that area? Versus what we're going to get for um, our assessment? No.
I don't believe so. I think the uh, the table that we showed showed that it only brought in the fire, the fire revenue.
Assessment fee.
Fifty percent.
Well, so Pastor, what what else you gonna do with that land? Is it gonna, tell me the picture?
Well, we've had it. I've been here forty something years.
Yes, sir.
And uh, we've we've been trying to figure out water problems. We've had every kind of system there is, we still get nasty water. And so right now we're doing bottled water. You know, big jug like that and just using it for water for the toilet. And uh, we want to, we want to, we're trying to save enough money to come across the road from the other side. And I've, I've already done my checking. I know it's expensive.
Yeah, but so no building in the future?
Not at this time. I mean, not, not right now.
That's what other people say.
I can't, I can't tell you what to mark home. I can tell you there is not a plan right this morning. Now, if somebody wants to buy the property, I would sell it.
Yeah.
But I don't have anybody marketed. It's not up to sale. And uh, there is quite a bit of wetlands involved.
Do we know how much of that, that acreage is wet?
I can tell you.
It's twenty.
It's almost twenty-one acres.
No.
Twenty, twenty.
Oh.
Wetlands, wetlands.
Probably about fifteen.
Fifteen of it?
Well, probably maybe fourteen, fifteen, fourteen. Cause we're on, I'm trying to figure out what we use. And we had, we used to have a school.
Right.
And we used to ball field. And that part of that ball field is wet. I didn't know that, but we, you know, we cut the grass and play ball.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, yeah, my question would be based on, cause it, you you're purchasing that land, correct?
No, no.
They own it, they own it.
We've owned it for.
But it's been in the county.
Over. So it's already been off the tax roll off.
Oh, it's been forever.
Okay. So I, yeah, I'm, I, yeah, I just, I just.
It's counted, isn't it?
Been counted.
Right, but we just annexing it into the city.
Well, that's what they're proposing, yes.
It's, it's look like it's, it gonna be a little bit of a benefit, I guess. I mean, we, we're not, nobody, it's not like somebody paying taxes already on, I mean, it's a tax paying property. So by them annexing it, I think it'll, it'll help the city.
Yeah.
And you got what, fourteen acres of non-budible wetland, wetland?
Well, it's probably not non-budible, but you'd have to fix it to build on.
Okay.
So I have a question. If this was to be approved, how soon would you all move forward with the?
Soon as we get the money. We're working on it, but I can't tell you. We don't have the time, but we're working on it.
So this is something that could possibly, if not approved tonight, that it's not an immediate?
It will be done next month, nothing.
I would like to, I'd like to make, put a, put a clause in, clause into the approval, maybe.
I think they will approve.
Well, if if it's not done within a period of time, then it'll revert back to what it, what it, what it was and he wouldn't be able to.
To the county.
Yeah, well, well, cause it's nothing, it is not improved.
This West.
Can't unannex.
We can't unannex.
That's right, this weight.
Well, we, well, we need to figure this out then, uh, in terms of how we move forward before we vote on this in terms of.
So what is the request of the commission at this point? Do we want to table this?
I make a motion, I make a motion that we table this item to uncertain time till we can get this worked out and as it relates to his his interest in what, and how he plan on moving forward with the properties before we go and annex it into the city.
I agree.
What's your question?
Question?
Yeah, what's your question?
Well, what, what, we're changing, we're annexing your, the properties into the city without you saying that you're going to be improving it with connected, with water connections among other things. So we, we, we need to understand and know when you, when you plan on
Okay.
doing it. And we just, and and within this time period, we need to be trying to get that figured out and add, add into.
Hey, I'm not. Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my problem is, is that if I got the money in January, February, I'd have to come back and we got three more months to play with this, is what I'm saying, you know, going through this again. I've been working on, I've been working to get this done for almost eight months.
So if this matter is to be tabled, he wouldn't have to go through the process. The process is already there. It would just have to come back before the commission.
So about a two-month period.
Well, we haven't set a timeframe yet.
Say you don't have the money, so.
Well, I don't today, but I might have tomorrow.
Okay. I understand that. Well, I would say come back tomorrow. I'll tell you, come back when you have the money. But I. Commission, what I would like to say um, is we need to look at a.
I think it's a broader issue.
Pardon me?
A broader issue. We're not looking at when he can hook up. That's not our main issue.
Right. We should look at annexing, I'm sorry, services without annexing. We need to change the ordinance. Because there are people who just want the services and we could get the, we could get the fees for the services, but they don't have to be annexed to get fire services and and police services.
Well, they're paying for the fire, fire already.
Fire assessment fee. Yeah.
I know it's not.
Right, but um, I think that's what we need, we need to look at, Mayor. Um, as far as annexing properties, the way we have been doing it, I mean, you talk about twenty acres here, we just did eight acres and you talk about a hundred seventy-seven. I think we could still get revenue from the services without these uh, landowners annexing in. But that, that ain't gonna take care of your problem right now, but my suggestion was what, I meant what I said. Um, if you want to come in, you tell them, tell us you don't know what you're going to future, have there in the future. And you want our water. Our water is not that great.
Excuse me?
Yes, we, we have good water.
Not that great. It is.
It's better than the well.
Okay, we're going on.
I could say, that water's not. I buy water to drink myself. I don't drink the city of water. It's, it, it's something that we gotta work on. We have plenty of it, though.
Here's the, one of the part about the water is I have to deal with the D E P.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a, that's a, I pay monthly on that. Services for them to take care of my water that we don't even use.
But.
Now I can understand.
See, that's my problem. I, I mean, I pay monthly for a guy to come check my, well, he comes every week, check my water. And then we pay yearly, whatever. And we're always having this huge test with the D E P. And we don't even, we flush. We don't break a drop.
And I.
Okay.
We don't do any.
Mission to Campbell.
Me.
And I think overall, even though we have those concerns, the, the overall, the overwhelming response is the quality of water that they're receiving. And what they have to, the magnitude of what they have to do to even flush toilets um, of, is, of, of what I'm hearing. Um, so I don't want us to lose focus of what the original request is as we move forth with conversation, even though I do have questions about the future land um, of what they, if there's anything. But again, we want to speak to the immediate purpose of which is the quality of water. And now knowing the resources um, that they are expending uh, on waters that they are not even utilizing.
And that's, that's exactly what we need to know and through discovery, that makes sense.
So how would we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Okay, how would we like to proceed?
Well, I, I think we, we, we need to try to help him out as, as best we can as it relates to his current uh, dilemma that he's dealing with right now. I mean.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
I didn't get to the, no, opposition. Okay, see, we had two in favor. Opposition, nay. Three in opposition.
Motion.
No, it didn't pass.
Motion failed, three to two. Madam Mayor, the second ordinance on that item. All right, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-three.
No, no, because the property was not annexed in, we don't have jurisdiction over rezoning or future land use map changes.
We're, we're set, we're moving on to moving on to F.
Madam Mayor, presenting to you ordinance number twenty twenty-three forty-six. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than fifty acres in size from City of Palaca Commercial CR to City of Palaca Industrial I N for the following property located on K Larkin Drive, Block Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven, parcel number three, ten, twenty-six, four, zero, zero, one, three, zero, 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 two, zero from the city of Palaca Public Buildings and Grounds, K B to the city of Palaca Industrial for the following property located at ten K Larkin Circle, Block Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven. Parcel number three, ten, twenty-six, four, zeros, zero, zero, one, zero, 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 four, zero from the city of Palaca Public Buildings and Grounds, K B to the city of Palaca Industrial I N for a portion of the following property located at forty fifteen Reed Street, Block Florida, three, two, one, seven, seven. Parcel number three, ten, twenty-six, four, zeros, zero, zero, one, zero. It goes to the boundaries of the city of Palaca and providing for Governor's errors and providing for an effective date, and even without the legal, it's still long.
Ms. Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is long, Sunny, you're right. Three different parcels. This is a request to amend the land use and zoning for the three parcels, a vacant twelve point three acre parcel located on K Larkin Drive, a one point four nine acre parcel at ten K Larkin Circle, and approximately fifteen point four acres of a vacant portion of the airport parcel located at four zero, one, five Reed Street for a total of approximately twenty-nine point one nine acres. The proposed use for the site is classified as industrial and the format of this report shall show a separate analysis for each parcel. Sunny, if you could uh, move on to the staff report, please? Thank you. The proposed uses are non-residential and will not increase the population of City Palaca. The city does not collect property taxes on the airport property. The twenty twenty-three city only tax bill on the vacant twelve point three acre parcel on K Larkin Drive is one thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And the ten K Larkin Circle twenty twenty-three tax bill is one thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Those are property taxes collected for, only for the city of Palaca. If the proposed changes are approved, the city would no longer collect taxes on the ten K Larkin Circle parcel, but if the K Larkin Drive parcel is developed, property taxes on that parcel would increase accordingly. In this figure three on your screen, that subject parcel that is to the lower right and colored in brown this parcel right there is the twelve point three acre parcel on K Larkin Drive.
Where's the airport runway? In relation to that?
Um, thank you, Jeremy. It's so nice to have a taller person in the room.
Yeah.
He's not much taller.
Okay, Mr. Jones, you're up.
It's the bluish gray area with the just.
There you go.
That's it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you.
Group venture, thank you, guys. Let's see. So the city of Palaca proposes to use the subject portions of the currently vacant part of the airport and property and the one point four nine acre parcel that has structures on it for its proposed public works facility. And that parcel is located on K Larkin Circle right there. That's ten K Larkin Circle.
Giving a big piece for a little piece?
It's a little piece, one point acre and a half.
Yeah.
Just go to the city of Pal. City gets the twelve acres too.
City gets it, who's it's now?
It's Jeff, Mr. Jeff Nation.
Okay. So where's say, public building grounds? Is that?
Yes.
No, I'm asking where it says public, okay, who owns that?
That is part of the city of Pal, of Palaca's airport property. And public building, the buildings and ground is the land use for that.
So how to swear and give it?
Right, so the end result would be to color in, essentially color in all that area here and that parcel. And then um, along K Larkin Circle all the way down to where P R C Way comes in. The end result would, is proposed to be, all of that is proposed to be industrial. Right now, we're not including that. You're not, sir. Right now, we are not including that portion of um, the airport parcel in the right-hand corner.
There.
There, where the triangular point towards the runway. That portion is not included at this time. It is expected to be added later.
What size is that? I mean, you said a triangular point.
I'm going to estimate that at about fifteen acres.
On the airport.
Yes.
So, so how did, okay, so the, 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 what we're getting are being proposed um, the subject um, parcel um, right there, the industrial piece right there. Yeah, industrial. So Je- Jeff Nation owned that one? Didn't, the city didn't ever own that before?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
I mean, I thought since we had all of that for the most part, okay.
Right. So we're looking at, at redoing the land use change and rezoning three parcels. This one, the one at ten K Larkin Circle.
Who is that, ten K?
The one has, that has, Jeremy, can you point that out, please? That's one, thank you.
That's it?
That's ten K Larkin Circle. And then the portion going down along K Larkin Circle from the, almost to the runway down to P R C Way.
Runway down to.
Uh-huh. Right.
Okay. Okay.
I really appreciate your help, gentlemen, both of you.
There's so much pointing. Would you like me to make it bigger?
I, I'm not.
Now, I also would like for you to track it for those that may be watching that can't see where.
Um, then I would ask Ms. Walsh to come up here and highlight because I.
I don't care who does it, but or if we point the camera to where they could see.
In this image, the subject parcel is outline, is outlined in black, but it's highlighted in red. And that's on K Larkin Drive. It would be on the right-hand side of K Larkin Drive.
Right there.
And if I may, I think this is for point of clarity, this is, the city is applying for this huge change. This, this is one of the purposes.
Right. The city of Palaca is the applicant in this case and also acting on behalf of Mr. Nations.
Changes. Let me discuss this.
This is, this is the land swap deal?
Yes.
Yes.
So I was right. So we give it a big piece for a small thing.
Yeah.
That's what.
Would you like the applicant to
Yeah.
explain some of this? Okay.
Applicant's representative, please?
Applicants' representative.
Come up here, please, sir.
One thirty-four, Tim Lane, Jeremy Alexander, uh, Palaca, Florida. I'm, I'm not the applicant on this one, but I will address that. Well, I think the city's the applicant on this parcel, but.
But for clarity.
So there are other pieces in play, and I don't know if you have the whole staff report. I think that'll help a little bit. Commissioner Jones there. The twelve acre parcel that she's talking about, because I think there are two others to follow this one um, is coming from Mr. Nations to the city. I think the piece that you're specifically speaking to is the public works facility, which is going to be that other piece uh, that I pointed to with the two buildings. In the land swap, the city of Palaca also gets an additional two acres uh, during the site visit uh, with the public works folks. Uh, they needed a couple of additional acres for a lay down yard and storage. So there's actually another two acres that goes from Mr. Nations with that parcel at the top. So it's a total of. So it's a total of, and that's in here somewhere, but they're actually getting a net additional property, so.
I'm going to go on the record to say, being that we are the applicant, that we shouldn't have heard from. Mr. Alexander, that we should have heard from Public Works, or we should have heard from who we were hearing from at the beginning. So I want the record to reflect that I was not in favor of him representing the city at that particular moment.
So just to be clear, this, this is a land swap, and we have two applicants here, we do have the City of Palaca and Jeff Nations.
But the question was asked on behalf of the city.
Right, correct, and unfortunately, the city manager, who has the most knowledge of this, is not available.
With that being said, we probably need to table this. Because we don't have, we don't really know all the intricacies as it relates to everything that we're doing the swaps and all these. I think it, it'll help if. If our, if the, if the interim city manager or somebody should have given, given a presentation to the. Missioned, so that we would know all of the different pieces that we're dealing with here, and so I think this is a big deal here.
It is, we do have city staff available, and I, I will say, having reviewed a lot of the legals on this together with Ms. Walsh, she has a, a very deep understanding. Of what is occurring, so if you do have questions, she is extremely qualified to answer them. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Well, I just, as a decision maker, and we, we own it when we vote on it, I mean, staff won't own it, there's, the residents and the, the people who live in, the citizens going. Say, you guys voted on it and you didn't know, so I'd rather know a little bit more about. These swamps and these properties that we're, we're dealing with.
I mean, we're talking about the planning director. That's a slap in the face to the planning director.
I think we can.
And oftentimes.
I'm not talking about her.
We lean on their expertise. That she should be able to answer any question that has come before us, she has worked with. The city manager, she has worked with. All parties involved, and as stated, she is the professional when it comes down to this process. And we often, again, we often rely on expertise. In these matters.
Do you know all of the?
I think Ms. Walsh can come up and tell us all of this if we want, if we have specific questions about all of this.
And, and I would just try to hone back in on what tonight is for. It's my understanding that the land swap has already been approved, this is just a land use change, we're not voting on the land swap. That, that's over and done and executed, this is simply so Public Works can utilize the facility that they've now, they're going to acquire, this, this allows them to do, that's my understanding.
Correct.
Yes, the conveyance has already occurred, you've already approved of that, but now we have to get the, the proper zoning and the future land use changes in place. Before we can do anything with the property that we now own.
Okay, would that, that better, I mean, I have a better understanding as opposed to things coming before me and I don't know all the intricacies, so thanks for bringing it out.
So are there any questions specific to the zoning of future land use of these properties?
I would like to know how to inspect the airport. And. I'd like to hear from Ms. McNair. And is this, well, I'll be second. Madam Mayor, commissioners? All right. Question, or questions? Do we have anything from FAA? But any concerns of any swapping, as I look at the, the close proximity of the runway and how it's situated out there? Is there any concerns from the Airport Authority, FAA? With any of this? Because I don't want to wait till we say, yeah, and then we have problems on the back end in kind of way. So, couple of points. Two months ago, we did a land release. Okay, I'm not sure if you guys recall that, but there was a land release approved, and it was for. The area running along here.
Right, right.
So, so that was part of the ALP. That was not an operational impactful area, you know, in terms of use for the airport, it was fine. What I'm hearing here tonight, in all candor, because I, I don't have the history, but I'm gonna just shoot straight. What I'm hearing here tonight is, we're talking about use. Okay, now, there are additional steps that need to be taken. But tonight, we're talking about use. You know, rezoning something from a, from a commercial to whatever. There's a meeting scheduled with FAA regarding swap properties. Okay, so, you know, I, I'm a little, I'm a little confused myself, there's a lot of history. But we have already released some property here as per our ALP for. You know, to this neighboring tenant. And, and that's the property, the red in the red? That's confusing. You confused, and you out there, you know.
This property here is, is, is part of the swap. So this property will become property that the airport can develop. And it'll also be contiguous with some existing. From our runway here, we can approach on 35. And, you know, again, there's not immediate development opportunity, but there is additional area for.
It'll benefit the city better because it'll be, it'll become the city as opposed to staying with Mr. Nation. Because it's next to the runway, correct, so if it's next to the runway, if the city obtained that, that'll.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be more beneficial for the cities.
Yeah, yeah, I have bigger blocks.
Right, right.
And again, I would like, because I don't think Commissioner Jones was in here when the conversation was at hand, that it's already been.
That's already happened. On October 12th, just talking about zoning and land use changes.
My question was, I appreciate that, just was the FAA onboard with what we're doing, are we aligned? That's what's important to me, they oversee it. They ultimately will say.
That's good.
Yeah, or they, and that's, that's a question, so. That's a legal question as well, I would like to.
So as, as for the use, nothing has transpired, there are no site plans. If they were, if the city were to proceed with any sort of development of this parcel. Given its proximity to the runway, it would probably have to get FAA approval, but that is further down the line, this is at the use and future land use match age. Stage, we're, we're not proposing any development of the site currently. But of course, the city would not do anything presumably to jeopardize. The, the financial viability of the airport and come into violation with federal FAA standards.
Great, so. First, the, the reason why I ask, purpose of that ask. It could appear that as we are getting something. But it may, down the road, where you're talking about, we may not be able to utilize it, so we swap some property and we got, we have the, the property for the public works. But what looked like a good deal cannot be such a good deal, that's why I'm asking, so I want to be able to ask these questions upfront before. I know we got land there, but before we come back and FAA say, well, you know. That wasn't such a good idea, great. The airport city. Keeping the city's best interests at heart.
I'm not sure anyone here can answer that question, I don't think anyone here has a crystal ball in terms of what the FAA. Might say down the line without knowing what is going to be proposed for this parcel. We can certainly look at FAA regulations now and be sure to not propose anything that would contemplate any sort of violation of FAA rules. And of course, I think that's what we would do. Because again, we don't want to jeopardize the ability to have a financially viable airport. So I, I don't anticipate in hypothetical mode, the city proposing any type of use of this property that would jeopardize our airport viability.
So let me take it a step further. This, this property, considering it's a neighboring property, will have to go through a process for development. Because, you know, height restrictions and those things, let, let's just be realistic about it. Any property adjacent to an airport, you know, have to go through a little bit more extra. For the imaginary lines that surround the airport or the bowl itself. So. You know, I certainly echo what the city attorney is saying, and, you know, it, it's, it's, it's consistent. So I think the letter just came up about what was actually released. Sunny, you put, okay. So, so this was the, was a release that was put in place a couple of months ago. That was actually approved by the FAA for this specific area. Answer my question.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Well, I want to be consistent, I asked the pastor about his future use, so. Mr. Nation, what their future use out there?
We're not, we're not on that yet.
I could ask the question.
Our, our future uses, yeah, this is the city's parcel, we don't have any.
Yeah, but you have.
That's what.
Yes, we'll do that next, okay, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, do we have a motion?
It's approved.
You have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye, any opposition? Thank you. Onward.
Regarding the same matter, ordinance number 2023R47, when I eventually get to it, sorry, this is a very long ordinance with exhibits. Okay. Ordinance number 2023R47, there's no R, 47, and ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida. Providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacca Florida be amended from the City of Palacca General Commercial Light C2 to the City of Palacca Light Industrial M1 for the following property located on K Larkin Drive, Block 42177, parcel number 31026400131020. From the City of Palacca AP1 to the City of Palacca Light Industrial M1 for the following property located at 10K Larkin Circle, Block 42177, parcel number 310264000100040. From the City of Palacca Airport Zoning AP1 to the City of Palacca Light Industrial M1, for a portion of the following property located at 45th, 4015 Reed Street, Block 42177, parcel number 31026400100040. Providing for separability, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Opening up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, do we have a motion?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye, any opposition? Thank you. Onward, G.
202345, an ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, authorizing the execution of documents accomplishing the release of that reverter. Found in the City of Palacca ordinance 1019, thereby eliminating the requirement that the portion of North 16th Street, which lies between St. John's Avenue and Reed Street, Highway 17. Be used as a new car dealership in order to avoid the reversion of the City of Palacca of the street, which was vacated by ordinance 1019 in the documents.
How did we, so, I think we missed one.
We missed it, I missed one. Yeah, that's the next item.
I'm reading the wrong one? That item G, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I didn't, that's my fault, saying G. It was still on.
Can you tell me where to go?
We, I thought we just approved both ordinance 23, 20, 202346 and 202347.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was item F.
Continue with G.
She was right, I'm sorry, you were right.
Okay. I'm going back to G. Do I have to start at the top? Okay, quiet. Taking up, where I think I left off. To be used as a new car dealership, although technically it's the current car dealership. In order to avoid the reversion of the, to the City of Palacca of the street, which was vacated by ordinance 1019 and the documents authorized therein. Providing that the easement retained by the city as described within ordinance 1019 would continue to be retained by the city and will not be relinquished or released, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, commissioners. This is a request to amend that ordinance 1019 by striking section two and ceding the former right-of-way of 16th Street. Between Reed Street and St. John's Avenue is defined in ordinance 1019, Schedule A to Palacca CBG LLC. In that ordinance, 1019, section two stated that if the. Auto dealership were to cease operation as an auto dealership for. At least 180 consecutive days. That right-of-way, which was vacated by that ordinance, so the right-of-way was already vacated by the ordinance, but that reverter clause was in there. So that if it ever ceases being a car dealership for 180 days, that right-of-way would come back to the city. The applicant is requesting that that section be struck from the ordinance, or the ordinance would be revised not to include that section. So that they would, there would be no possibility of that right-of-way reverting back to the city. Well, there's a couple of reasons that they could do it, I do not know for certain, they didn't reveal that to me, but. If you are going to sell a piece of property or redevelop a piece of property and get a loan on it, you would have essentially a cloud on your title. And, and that's more than likely what the issue is.
But. Do you think, well, that's legal, do you think that the board of commissioners prior to us thought about the safeguard by putting that reverter clause in there? In case dealership do cease operation?
I, I am sure that they, you know, I'm, I'm going to, anything that comes out of my mouth right now in response to that would be complete speculation. I do know that a reverter existing does cause a cloud on title and could definitely put a monkey wrench in any sort of loan.
Right, and we do not maintain that right-of-way at this moment because we don't own it anymore. We wouldn't obviously not redo the maintenance on it afterwards either, either way.
And I don't know if it has any bearing, but in a previously or initially, there was some opposition to area businesses and that sense has changed as well.
It has, we received, there was a gentleman that owned St. John's Autobody that appeared at the last hearing. About this at the planning board and expressed his support. He was one of the people that was in opposition to it in a strong manner back in 2010, but he has since changed his mind. The only other. Issue, the only other person to come before us and express opposition to it is former Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown. Otherwise, we have had no other. Comments received.
And I've provided those comments as a handout to the commission.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Well, I had this sitting up here for me.
Go ahead, no, I see it, sorry.
Well, my only issue is that when it was, it was initially drawn up, that clause was put in there for a, for a reason. And in, in my opinion, when I think about it, you talk about ingress egress, we talk about some response time for EMS. Because that used to be a street until the group got together and said that they needed that area closed off so that they could develop that. And so. And, and my belief is that it's, it's there for a reason, and if it does, if they does, if they do cease business. And, and it sees back to the city, then it's, it could potentially maybe go back to a, a roadway where people can be accessed through EM, for EMS. Life and health, life, life, health and safety. No, we couldn't, we couldn't make that back the road again?
It, in order to do that, you would actually have to do some tremendous changes to the way it currently exists, there is a roundabout there and therefore we would not be utilizing that as far as access for. There is a roundabout there and therefore we would not be utilizing that as far as access for emergency purposes. We would use the adjacent streets to the east and the west.
But I, 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 I understand that piece, but it was, you know, basically you can just clear that out and go straight, straight, you know, straight through.
You would have to remove the roundabout because an emergency vehicle can't make that turn in the roundabout.
And that, that's what I'm saying. It, it could, this city have, have the resources to be able to do that. So that's, that's just my, uh, take on.
Okay, um, the applicant, or the applicant's representative is here. If you would like to say a few words or answer any questions, please.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jim Troyano, and I do represent Palac Chevy Buick GMC. Uh, my address is two thousand Reed Street. Um, if I may to kind of clear up some, uh, maybe confusion here, I have a map of the area. Can I present it to you, Madam Clerk? So Madam Mayor, our intent with development that we're seeing in the community, development we're seeing, um, throughout the, the area. Not only in Putnam County, but surrounding areas, our dealerships are going to have to expand. We are looking at the potential of a hundred new technicians. And with that, we have to expand our auto facilities. And so that means new jobs, a lot of new jobs. And this one location is somewhere where we're looking at, if, if you could look at the map and you could take. Um, where it says Saint John's Avenue up top, it's circled, well, just put it to where you can read it then. Reed Street on the top and Saint John's Avenue on the bottom. What we're planning to do is we're planning to place a building directly over that roundabout. So our dealership, um, Sunny, do you have that at all in your? Actually, yeah, can you just keep it right there? Um, if I may? So the building is going to come out and it's going to cover this area here. And as Ms. Walsh presented earlier. In her presentation that we are going to seek financing for that. And by putting a building there, you know, our intent is to stay here in Palatka. Our intent is to continue growing, providing good business, providing jobs for this community. And we need to expand our dealership and we're asking you for your assistance in that. By understanding that we want to place a building over top of there, and that building is going to be there for many years to come. Um, so we have no intent at all to, to leave this great community and we just want to add to. And to ensure that we're providing good services to our customers. And again, um, jobs. Here, good paying jobs for people in our community. So if you, if you see that, you can see how the building is proposed to go over the roundabout itself.
That being said, that's, that's cleared up my, my issue of concern because of the development there. It's going to be something. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And if I understand correctly, the development or the expansion comes from the corporate office, correct?
I, I'm sorry.
The expansion of.
So we have looked, uh, as part of the corporation, we have looked, we have been advised through, um, surveys. And, uh, analysis in the community as far as growth occurring, that we need to expand our service, uh, line that we have. So yes, sir, that it's, it's through the corporate side. We've been advised that we need to expand our dealerships and provide additional, um. Uh, service line, that particular service line to the community.
Any additional questions, Mr. Troy? Well, thank you. Um, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Do we have a motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Going to regular business. Motion for reconsideration of appeal, Mr. Green, Ms. West.
So if you recall the chronology on this, um. This originated with the Historic Preservation Board approving of a chain link fence around the Little Sprouts property daycare facility. Um, Mr. Green filed an appeal of that decision, which goes to you. That's the next procedural step. Um, you concurred, it was a majority vote with Commissioners Campbell, Borum and McCaskill in the majority. Mr. Green, uh, has requested that you entertain a motion for reconsideration. The only commissioners that can, uh, move for reconsideration are those commissioners that were in the majority. I have provided, um, a memorandum on this and I believe I've talked to, uh, each of you. And I'm available for any questions you may have, but at this point I'll turn it over to Mr. Green who is seeking the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Commissioners, uh, Tim Green, one fourteen South Third Street. I'm here tonight, uh, to request your reconsideration of an earlier motion regarding the approval. Of a certificate of appropriateness, uh, for a chain link fence at two hundred South Seventh Street. Uh, as you may recall, my appeal on November ninth failed on a three-two vote. Um, and as we all know, uh, the appeals process exists to undue decisions made with good intentions. But were otherwise either compromised by improper procedure. Or if the approval was made without sufficient knowledge of all the facts.
Excuse me, prior to you moving forward.
Yes.
I just want to know if there is a selected timeframe that he has to present his case.
Yes, Sunny, if you could please turn on the timer for five minutes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, when appropriate, he also provided me with a short video. I don't know if we want to do the video first to the slides, but I have them both ready.
The video, I, I mean, uh, I can read the quote. We can skip the video. I might be faster than the video, but it's available.
Okay.
And, and the slides will be very brief. It's really more speaking.
Ready for the timer?
Okay.
Let's go.
Uh, as you all, um, this chain link fence application has suffered both, both improper procedure and a lack of sufficient knowledge. Uh, of the facts. And the decision on the fence needs to be corrected in order to avoid future challenges. To the validity of Palatka's municipal code. Uh, with that, as I present, I ask that you please give careful consideration to key, uh, two key matters. First, please pay attention to the irregularities and misinformation that has occurred throughout the whole C O A application process and hearings. And second, consider the consequences of permitting the claim of financial hardship without evidence. As justification to violate municipal code. So to start, uh, the C O A application was submitted by Mr. John Vanderwerf, who owns two hundred South Seventh Street. Under the business name T P Schoolhouse LLC. Uh, and the video, which I'll read the quote, he spoke at the October fifth, uh, H B B Historic Preservation Board meeting. And the quote reads, "It's a school. We don't want it to look like a prison. We want it to look nice." "We have some regulations that say we have to, uh, have a perimeter fence, uh, property at the school because of children." "So the front, as much as we can make it look good, we will," end quote. However, uh, in the hearing on the ninth, Mr. Vanderwerf did not appear before you. Nor did a legal representative as procedurally required. Instead, uh, Mr. Vanderwerf's tenant. Risa Bird, Director of Little Sprouts Learning Center, and Mr. Colin Bingham, a real estate developer, spoke on behalf of the applicant, which is a breach of procedure. So to be clear, Mr. Bird and Mr. Bingham are not on the C O A application. They are not the applicants. So nevertheless, Mr. Bird and Miss, uh, Miss Bird and Mr. Bingham claimed that the compliance with the city's ordinance. Regarding the historical requirements for the fence would be cost prohibitive, but provided no documentation of the actual cost. Of what it would be to comply, nor any evidence of financial hardship. The applicant, T P Schoolhouse LLC is a private, for-profit business and their finances are not readily available. However, public record shows that Mr. Vanderwerf owns millions of dollars of property in Putnam County. And purchased the two hundred South Seventh Street property in December twenty twenty-one for one point two million dollars. So the public record suggests that the applicant, Mr. Vanderwerf, under T P Schoolhouse LLC. Has the financial means to comply with city code, which contradicts the claims made by Ms. Bird and Mr. Bingham. So, in review of the C O A application, I found it. I found it absent irrelevant facts and documentation, which has undermined the integrity of the entire review process. The application includes a pencil drawing of a perimeter fence that's not drawn to scale, no specifics on gates or egresses. And more importantly, no evidence or documentation to support their claim that the chain link fence was a requirement. In order to meet state regulations for childcare facilities, nothing. Furthermore, Ms. Walsh, as a planning director, was responsible to vet the application, not only to ensure the sufficient details. But also to ensure it complies with state municipal code as well as the spirit of historic preservation. Based on the lack of documentation in her file, Ms. Walsh did not perform her duties. The applicant's file contained no documents pertaining to state regulation on school fencing for schools. Nothing on Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act and nothing on Mediterranean revival architecture. Without documented evidence, Ms. Walsh provided unsubstantiated misleading statements about the state regulations as if it were fact. In her written staff report to the Historic Preservation Board. As a result, the H B B approved the chain link fence based upon Ms. Walsh's unfounded recommendations. And ultimately contradicted decades of precedence and violated municipal code. Ms. Walsh stated the proposed chain link fence met the recommendations by the Secretary of Interior Standards. This is false. Ms. Walsh claimed the proposed chain link fence was a requirement of the state of Florida. This is false. Ms. Walsh claimed the fence was not damaging to the historic character of the building or surrounding neighborhood. This is false. And under oath, Ms. Walsh told Commissioner Jones that the proposed chain link fence was in the architectural character of the historic Mediterranean revival building. This is false. So if the Historic Preservation Board was given the actual facts rather than this misinformation, it's my belief. The application would have been denied and we wouldn't be here and probably denied unanimously. So. Can I request fifteen seconds?
No, we've got to. We, we really have to keep it on time.
Okay, so the only slides, the slides just are a summary of the state regulations.
Thank you.
Questions?
Does anybody have any questions to Mr. Green? No. The representative for. Mr. Vanderwerf, please.
Is this a part of the?
Ju- just to be clear, this would be the public comment section. Um, I did receive, uh, from Mr. The property owner authorization for, um, Mr. Cola Bingham. To speak on his behalf. He's out of town today. So I did receive that authorization for this proceeding.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Anybody here for public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, close public comment. There you go. Did you want us? Okay.
So to be clear, this is not an appeal. This is not a quasi judicial hearing. This was a request by a member of the public. For you to entertain a motion for reconsideration. So there's, there's no petitioner respondent. It's a presentation by a member of the public and then it's public comment.
And we just finished public comments, so with that said, how would the commission like to proceed?
Well, in my opinion, from, um, speaking with staff and, uh, understanding. Where we, where we are, it, it would be in the best decision, I guess, to, um, maybe repeal. Um, the decision that was made, um, the night, uh, we, that we, we voted on that, that item. So I want to recon- reconsider, reconsider and push it back to the, uh, Historic Preservation Board.
With some direction?
With, with directions, correct.
And that is?
For, for the historic board to look at and make sure that what's presented. Is, is in compliance with the city code, municipal code.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion? Second, for the sake of discussion.
You have a motion and it's been seconded.
All in favor?
She wants to discuss it.
I'm sorry. Yes, I, I didn't hear. So, hearing Commissioner Borum's motion, is that the advice that you gave us? Is that clarity, give us some clarity on that?
Yes, um, the motion for reconsideration to send it back to the H P B with guidance, which Commissioner Borum did just delineate in his motion.
Okay.
Right, be- because we, we would have never had that if, if, if that piece would have been, been, uh, addressed during that time. Because we, we overruled our own code and it should have not came out of the, uh, Historic Preservation Board. Without, um, due consideration of the municipal, uh, municipal codes.
And, um, just moving forward, uh, we are the ones that's going to make the vote amongst ourselves, the three of us, correct?
So once the motion for reconsideration has been made by a member of the majority before, then it proceeds.
Like a regular motion. Okay, so a motion is second.
I'm not, I'm not mayor. I apologize. Um, and just for further clarification, when it goes back to. The board. What's the process there?
I will be guiding them through the process with, um, the specific guidance. That has been set forth that they must adhere to, um, the delineations that Commissioner Borum set forth. Um, and specifically, as I noted, um, the Division of State Historic Resource Standards.
And this may be a question, um, that's related to this, but in the future, how do we stop from getting to this point again?
That, that's a good question. Um, you know, you have volunteer boards, uh, in both the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning Board. And, you know, staff tries to guide them as much as possible, um, so do I. But we can't control, um, their recommendations and their final vote. Um, so.
And generally, they do a great job.
Almost.
I'm not talking about generally, we're talking about.
I'm talking about specifications.
No, I understand, but I want to make sure that if it's something that we need to set forth prior to it coming to the commission. That it's handled at that level to where it does not, even if we put in the recommendation that we allow you to intervene. Um, and give a legal, um. Legal jargon or legal's opinion, that's what I'm looking for, a legal opinion. Um, because again, we often say that we don't want to go against those who are in the capacity of serving. But again, we don't want to be put back in this position if it could have been avoided.
Of, of course, um, I completely agree. We will do everything we can so that doesn't happen. But appeals from lower, um, volunteer boards do happen within cities. It, it, it does happen. Um, we will work hard to try and prevent it and provide the guidance necessary, but we can't always control it.
Yes, I understand that, but at the same time, I think as a, uh, uh, city attorney representing the city. Um, even though they are a volunteer board, then, uh, you need to render your legal opinion, um. Towards the, 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 whatever the outcome was, if it's going to be a negative impact on the city. I think, uh, we need to at least have that from, from you and then that'd give us better information that we could move forward with. So that's what I would be looking for.
Yes, and Commissioner Borum, I completely understand on this particular, um, item, when it came before the Historic Preservation Board. Uh, there, there was no opposition during the, the comment on this particular agenda item. Um, so it was, uh, we have an unusual cer- situation here with, uh, the appellant. Unfortunately, the way the code is drafted, anyone can file an appeal. Um, so they don't have to be an adjacent property owner. They don't have to be within a certain radius. Anyone can file an appeal. Um, that is something we may want to address in the code going forward, but we're, we have to deal with the way the code is drafted now.
So in, as a haste to make that, I will make a recommendation that that comes before the commission sooner than later. So that we can start the process.
Addressing the ordinance.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. You have something else?
Yeah, but, but even, even, even at that, that, that they can make an appeal. Or if we try and change it, then not let them. or if we try and change it, then not let them, but if, if, if we still had the legal opinion, then whether they make an opinion or not, I mean, or an appeal or not, if they don't have a strong case, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't go anywhere. So I think that we just need to have the opinion of our city attorney so that we know that we're, we, I'll feel a lot better about a decision that I make as opposed to having to take some step backs, take some stuff back.
Any further discussion? No, a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Next, we have the Discussion Direction Historic Central Academy Preservation CDC. Jane? I'm Ms. West, I'm so sorry.
That's again by a member of the public to be placed on this agenda. The quest comes from the Historic Central Academy Preservation CDC, Inc.
Good evening. Good evening.
One minute?
Five minutes.
Yes.
Five minutes on?
Five minutes, yes. Name and address, please.
I'm Shirley Edwards, 116 James Place, Palatka, Florida. I'm the Executive Director of Historic Central Academy Preservation CDC. We are here tonight just to solicit your support. I have a brief slide here.
Madam Mayor, before I begin the timer, well, I kind of already did, but I'll cancel it. But may I ask if the pointer is up there and if she would prefer for me to click next slide? I know that takes some time. Is the pointer up there? I think I gave it to somebody. Would you like to use the pointer? Would you like to direct me to the next slide?
Let me just direct you.
Okay.
Because I'm probably not going to talk on all of the points at this point now.
We'll start tonight about that words, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to first of all acknowledge Madam Mayor and the commission. We do appreciate this opportunity to present before you. With the interest of time, like I said, it's not going to be as long. So I'll probably just tell you to keep going. I just want you to see some of the pictures. I'd like to take the time to acknowledge my board. If you'd please stand, they're here and they've endured. Thank you. This is Reverend Vickers is our chairperson. Mr. Edward Williams is a board member. Ms. Tasha Givens is my co-director and director over the Grants Committee. Ms. Reverend Beverly Canty in the back is our treasurer. Our co-chair is not present, that's Vivian McGray. And we are seeking a secretary right now. You can go ahead and start this slide to the second page. This is the original school. Excuse me, it was erected in eighteen ninety-two, established there for children between first and eighth grade. Up until nineteen twenty-five, it was first through eighth, then it went up to twelfth grade after that. And on that same year, they received the first accreditation in the state of Florida. In nineteen thirty-six, this particular building was burned down and they erected the building on Washington Street, which is the next slide. Thank you. At this time, this was, you see the children looking out the window. That was first through eighth at that time, and then later on, it went up to twelfth grade under the principal Walker. Just trying to gather myself. I don't want to give all of the information. Again, I'm, we're just here to solicit your support for the project. We started meeting again, the board and the organization itself was inactive for approximately three years. We have gained the support of the Palatka Housing Authority. We are partnered now. We are in discussion for a memorandum of understanding currently. We've been meeting with them and we've been swapping information about potential grants and other ways to have the project funded. We started back in June and then we've had our elections. We are liable. We are strong in our faith about continuing this project on from where they left off. Excuse me, the original board's members, several people had moved away and then some people resigned. And when they were not able to be successful with that last grant, the organization just became defunct for a while. Now, our goal is to rebuild, restore and rejuvenate the spirit and the legacy of this iconic school. Our vision is to offer the community, sustainable community and educational resources with a concentration absolutely on the North Side community. On November twelfth in nineteen ninety-eight, our organization was added and this site, this site was added to the U.S. National Registry for Historic Places due to the efforts of our organization. We have remained in, in good standings as well with the state. And we will continue to be. You can move on. This is our school song. I say our because I'm a graduate of Central Academy Elementary and then I went on to CA for two years before integration. You can move on. Yes, Mr. Hartsville was one of the iconic principals there back in the early fifties, I think. Mr. Fred Brooks was the last principal at Central Academy High School before integration. And Mr. Leroy Mullen was the last principal at the elementary school. This is one of my favorite pictures in the whole book. It's a yearbook staff from nineteen fifty-two, if you can imagine. One of our members loaned us the yearbook from that year. His aunt was in that class. That is the staff and I just really admire that picture. This is some highlights from the CA, class of sixty-one to sixty-two. Keep going, please.
And you have to kind of wrap it up, Ms. Edwards, the five minutes is up.
I'm so sorry. Can I get an extension of two minutes at least? The hour has been really long.
Again, it's at the.
We've been here three hours, they waited.
Excuse me?
That's fine. I think there was a discussion.
Because we.
Two minutes though, let's just.
Two minutes. Okay, well then, let's go. Keep going, please.
Trying to set the clock.
Keep going. Next picture. You can move all the way up.
Okay, go ahead.
We can keep, you can go all the way up to where the picture of the, okay, right here, I'm sorry. This is the Central Academy marker that was donated by the class of nineteen seventy-six. We intend to erect that and put it in front of the building, not at this time, but at an appropriate time when the project gets started. And Mr. Williams is a member of our board and he's from that class, so we appreciate that. And their president, Mr. Larry Deering's. It's being housed right now at the housing authority, stored rather. This is a site in St. Augustine. They're currently under renovation, similar situation. However, they are doing really well with their renovation and got the roof up and everything now. And this is, this is just added measure, like it says, for inspiration and hope. Keep going, please. This is the current state, which we all know is why a lot of people don't feel that this can be done. We have, okay.
We got one more minute, one more minute.
Oh, wow. Okay, so you already know what that looks like. We have faith and we do believe we can get this done. We sought grants in the past and were granted a grant, so there's no reason we can't again. Keep going. This is the future and keep going. Want to, okay, right here, our proposed usage, educational resources, an innovative center, which would be, excuse me, an after-school program and a computer center, daycare, satellite college, which I am proposing and we're going to try to get Edward Waters University over here remotely. The museum and library would be up front where the original library would be, used to be. The community resources, a multipurpose room, not unlike the Price Martin. Satellite government offices, for instance, a social security representative coming in maybe a couple of times a week. And a small business center to assist people stepping out on business ventures. Any questions, please?
Any questions of Mr. Green? Question?
I think the request is to have it removed from the blight list. Prior to, we've had extensive conversations with regards to this property. And even at that time, I don't believe any of us was against what has been proposed. The list that was put into place, it wasn't to bring shame, wasn't to do anything of that nature. It was to bring light to situations or properties that needed to be brought into compliance.
Right.
And so I'm concerned about the precedence that we will be setting, even being that this is an historic property. We're not looking to take any property. We're not looking to do anything of that nature. We're just looking to bring properties into compliance. And at that time, Ms. Givens stood before the commission and asked some of those questions and that was relayed because I was one of the ones who made sure that it was relayed. We're not here to try to take away anything. We're here, while Central Academy plays a very vital part to the history, the African-American history, more specifically, on this historic North Side. My father is a graduate of Central Academy, so if anything, I would want to do this for him. However, even where I sit behind this dais, we have a duty to make sure that the courtesy we would extend to you, that we would extend to everyone. And again, everyone would be up here because why? It has some kind of historical relevance, their properties to them and their family. But again, I can assure you that I'm not, and I can speak probably for the commission, that we are not trying to take this property or do anything, again, with this property, what we want to make sure that this property does as every other property that is listed on there is to come into compliance in whatever way that they can, be it one year, two year, or three years. And I think as long as this property remains on that list, it shows or it will be a driving force for you all to continue to do what it is that you all do to make sure that it comes into compliance. And if anything, I honestly believe that it will help you when you go out seeking grant funding, putting that it is on a bright, on this blight list because you want to bring it to the bright list.
Yeah, I certainly agree.
I want to make sure that being here, I don't want to set a presence that, a precedence that if you all are here today, next week, we have a room full, at our next meeting, we have a room full of people wanting the same because their property holds sentimental values, hold family values and hold things of that nature. So I speak for myself, but again, I'm quite sure at this point, we know from our last meetings and meetings leading up until today, we don't want to see anything but great things come to that site. And if we can see it manifest because you all are listed, that's what it is going to have to be.
I certainly understand. I just want to make it clear, I was not present the night that Ms. Givens presented that question.
I was just making, I was just making, that was a question that had come before the commission.
We did discuss this after. I noted that Ms. Givens asked for that. But we do understand, the chairman and I and the rest of the board do understand why it's on the blight list. There are certain things that we're going to be trying to do to improve it on the outside, the little that we can do while we're struggling to try to get this starting to go. Any other questions, please, or comments? None?
You have my support with your endeavors and what you're trying to do.
I appreciate that very much.
That's one letter.
That's one of the main things we need is, is verbal support around the community. Because I do understand if I was a citizen watching from afar, I would wonder what was going on as well. And so we're trying to gain, regain the community's support as well as the city, the county and the local businesses as well.
And as, as communicated, even when Ms. Givens came before, when we did the Price Martin meeting, when she did her kickoff, again, like I said, anything that we can do to help assist in the matter with helping to bring that, that property back to its glory, we're here to help. And so again, you know, we, we do have, we, we work very hard to put things in place. And so that's, Commissioner Campbell said it best, and so we, you know, that's where we are and we're just here to help in, in any other way we can to help you guys get where it need to be.
Okay, I, I really appreciate it. Man?
Not prolong the meeting of the comments, but sustainability and safety is key in this process, so.
Sustainability, yes, that's why we, exactly, that's why those projects are up there. Can I make a comment?
Please, yep.
I don't, I don't want to be out of order, but I really feel like this project deserves a little more than five minutes. I didn't realize it was going to be just five minutes.
Again, that's kind of what we, we give to everybody and in fairness, if we extend it for you, then we have to extend it for everybody else and it just becomes unwielding and this meeting was already quite long, but we, we do give people five minutes. We gave a previous person five minutes and so, yeah.
Okay.
And again, I think the reason or what it's listed on as, I think there's a difference between presentation and discussion and direction.
Exactly.
And so I'm not sure what it was or how it came about to be on the agenda.
I requested it. I didn't know that we were just addressing us getting off the blight list. I requested to do a presentation.
So I think that's where the miscommunication is. But then even with that, I think we've already stated our position. We're not here to beat down this process. We're here to support, but then again, overall, it's between the organization and the Palatka Housing Authority. We have our support. I signed a letter showing my support and I will do so. But again, I think even if there was a longer presentation, the sentiments of us will still remain the same. This is something as an effort, if we want to get on as an individual and support this, do so. But at this general body, there's no more than we can do right now at this point outside of the support that we have for you. Again, between the Palatka Housing Authority and the organization, that's where the driving force needs to come. And if you so desire to come before the commission, every time we have a meeting, you have the right to do that. But I don't think it's going to change. This has nothing to do with us from the standpoint of moving forward, seeking funding or any other efforts that you all have to do. I fully support it. But then again, this governing body can't do anymore because it's not in our hands. We don't own it. It's owned by the Palatka Housing Authority and the organization who.
Well, yes, I understand that. I'll just, we just wanted support, that's all.
No, you have our support and I promise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Ms. West, we need to open it up for a public hearing.
I will. Opening up public comment. Is there anybody have a public comment? Is that what you said?
It's public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're all getting tired.
Back to Jim.
Good evening.
To be open for public comment. That was my error because we're all punch directed. But I'm sorry, go ahead. You're up here now, so you may as well do it and just let's get it down.
If this was as far as direction and.
I'm sorry.
We all are.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure. I mean, she's here, so we're going to give the opportunity, but this really didn't cause for a public comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tasha Givens. My address is 225 Stillwell Avenue here in Palatka. Just want to say thank you. We are coming forward as a board. We were asked back in April to keep the city updated on our progress and the things of, things that we've been doing as far as Central Academy, but we appreciate your support and we appreciate your time tonight. So I just wanted to say we're coming back because we were invited to come back and we want to finally present what we've been working on. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, we've been to ten, eleven has been canceled, twelve, Ms. Gano, Ms. Gano. Discussion Direction makeup evaluation rank committees to rank requests for proposals for American Rescue Plan Act funded programs.
Good evening, Marcia Gano. Just couldn't take very long here, but we recently, recently published two RFPs. One was for portable. One was for affordable housing and one was for utility assistance. We're here the night for discussion, discretion, a discussion, a direction on what we would propose as far as an evaluation committee. It's clear that these responses, these RFPs and these responses are very non-typical. We're used to doing, you know, capital improvements which are based on qualifications and price. This is a, a much more complicated undertaking and not in our bailiwick. This isn't the type of proposal that we're accustomed to evaluating, you know, in staff. But we're excited about it, it's two million for affordable housing and then, you know, money with the utility assistance. So I think it's a great opportunity to do the, some great things for the community. The responses are complicated. There are some that propose matching funds, there are some that propose a cost-plus basis. Some that, several that had firm bids, prices, but value, but varied by over a million dollars. So you're like, how do you get apples to apples, oranges to oranges? How do you get through here and really get a credible process in place that's gonna serve the city the way that it should? So what we are asking for, what we would recommend is for the affordable housing, that we have a representative, and this is for the evaluation committee for the, for the RFPs. That still has to come back to you, our, the evaluation committees' results still have to come back to you to be awarded. So, but this is what we would propose and we're asking for your guidance or concurrence. Affordable housing, we'd like to have a public housing rep. We'd like to have an affordable housing industry experts. We actually have found a few subject matter experts that would be a great enhancement to this process. We'd like somebody from the planning department, a project manager, and we'd like the finance director to participate. So that was the, you know, that's, that's, you know, kind of the, the way we started, docket that we started with. Do you want me to address questions at this time? Well, I'm almost done then. Utility, for the utility assistance, we were gonna recommend that a finance director, somebody from a gas authority, and then, you know, somebody from the staff. So your thoughts and ideas?
My only question is, is this something that we're gonna do moving forward for everything that's an RFP? Or are we just specifically doing it for? ARPA?
We are specifically doing it for these two RFPs. I don't think that there's any, I mean, they, they are ARPA, but I wouldn't say that we, it's just you look at these responses, you look at the, the context of them, and it's like, we need to get the right kind of group here to evaluate these and make a recommendation to the commission for implementation. So I, there, I have heard no discussion or direction that this is something we'd recommend going forward. I think these ones are unique and that's why we're here this evening. I know in the two and a half years I've been here, we have never come to you going, here's what we're thinking for this evaluation board. We always have them, we, we do it routinely ourselves, but we do think this one is a little bit broader and deserves some consideration outside of that. So we didn't want to surprise you coming in with a recommendation and then have questions about, well, who made these, you know, technical recommendations.
Any further questions? So what is our thought about this process and whether we wanna approve it, recommend something else?
Who is going to be the person to make the recommendation for the representatives?
Well, we, we're going to ask the public housing authority. We just wanted to make sure that we had a placeholder here for that organization to be represented. You know, planning department come from staff. I would like to participate as a project manager, we'd ask the finance director. And we do have an opportunity, we'd reach out for an affordable housing, you know, subject matter expert. And there's a number of people out there that have expressed an interest in helping. We have, you know, could present their resumes if, if you guys would like to be involved with that. And we, you know, the clock is running, we got two million on the affordable housing. We published this RFP in October. So we really want to move through the process of getting a selection, getting the evaluation committee and getting the RFP awarded and moving forward with implementing the program.
Okay, so how would we like to proceed, go ahead.
My question is, how are we gonna try to help them? What kind of, what scope are we trying to help them? Are we trying to give them a stipend, try to actually help them build a home? Help them obtain housing, what are we gonna do? So before you get those boards, you gotta know what, what direction we're really trying to head in. And I think that needs to come from up here.
Well, the, the affordable housing RFP cast a very, very broad list of opportunities. We can do everything from, you know, which is typically the way we write the grant. So you don't want to be pigeonholed at the beginning, you want to have those options. We are asked, these, these RFPs are for the administration of the program. So we did some draft program docs just because we were, so there hasn't, that decision hasn't been made. We're asking for whoever we award this RFP to, to make the recommendation on what would be done. And then you can approve it at that time.
I think that's gonna prolong. I think if we give direction to the administrator, it kind of limits what comes back to us because it's what we want and not what they want from us.
I, I think that's excellent. I think we just want to pick the administrator and get it matched up with the direction from you guys and get the program implemented and moving on.
I agree, because they have the expertise.
So can we workshop that of what we actually on a?
I, I think we're relying on the expertise of the respondents to the RFP.
No, that was not, that's.
They don't know what they're gonna respond to.
I, I remember, Mr. New, he doesn't need to come into play here.
So what, just to reiterate what I stated, I, we want to recommend, even though they may be the expert, we want to make sure that the money that we worked hard, or the money that was.
That we're actually.
That we were sure, that we want to make sure that it's a reflection of what the commission wants and not what these respected organizations want for the commission. So I think direction, stronger direction.
Yes.
Should come from the commission prior to and have them respond to what it is that we want.
Exactly.
Because if it's so broad, we want to make sure that the narrowing comes from us and we weave out what we know we don't want versus having them respond, they come to us, and when they respond to us, we don't want it. So if we give that direction at the forefront, it kind of saves on the back end, if you ask me.
I, I think that's, I, I think, if I understand you correctly, and maybe, let me, let me just mirror back the way I envisioned this as a possibility. One is we move forward, we establish a evaluation committee to evaluate and grade the applicants. Part of this, this RFP doesn't have anything in it about here's what they're gonna implement. So those decisions have not been made. There is plenty of time to get that additional guidance. I would say that we put that on the, the next agenda where you guys give us them what you want implemented.
What are they being graded on?
The criteria that's in the, it's experience and qualifications is forty points. Cost of their proposal is forty points. Use of qualified, their program to use qualified local vendors is worth ten points. And public information and outreach, their program, what they recommend for that is ten points.
I think it takes a committee to do to, to determine that.
Well, we, we always have to have a committee, evaluation committee for any, any procurement. We have to grade them in those areas.
No, I understand that, I just don't think that a separate committee from what we already previously have, I don't think it would require that. Now, once we get to the furthering inside of it to bring to score, I think we have qualified people on staff to determine the scoring. But as far as to assemble a committee that, you know, I just think that's a little bit redundant. When we have, if you're gonna be on it, you're a city employee. If you're gonna have somebody from finance on, they're already employed with the city. So every person that you named, for the most part, is already employed by the city.
With, with the, with the exception of reaching outside on the affordable housing one for a representative from public housing and, you know, a, a, a subject matter expert. There, you know, I appreciate the vote of confidence that.
And what I'm trying to get, and the reason I formed my question before, like, if we're gonna do it for this one, we have had other circumstances of unique RFPs that have come before the commission, and there was not a special committee formed to address those. And so at this time, if we're looking to kind of expedite the process, okay, reach out to Dr. Woods and his staff. But to say we're, we're creating an additional committee just to serve this purpose, I, I don't agree with that. Let's grade them, bring it back to us. And then in the event that we need to bring the subject matter experts into it, let's do it at that time. I don't think that's gonna change the grade of if we know we got the money. They're not the subject matter expert in the money that we got to spend. They're not the subject matter expert in some of those things that could be the preliminary component versus us bringing more people into the equation at the early onset. And it, I just don't feel like that's the appropriate thing to do at this time.
Um, I, I think that's fine, that's why we, we, you know, this one was a little bit of a fish out of water. So we wanted to get your concurrence before we took that step, that we had the right people evaluating them. So I hear, what I hear you say is just go ahead with our normal process, internal staff, grade the, grade the applicants, and then come back to a recommendation for award. In the meantime, you guys are also thinking about your criteria, about how you would like your expectations of these programs being implemented.
And then I think at that moment, that's where we bring the subject matter experts. And at that time, once we've identified what we desire, because if we desire something and the subject matter experts at the early part of the stage, they're not grading what it is that we want. So I think that's the appropriate time that we bring the subject matter experts in once we start having the discussion of what it is that we desire to see.
And, and I, I think that's absolutely a very, very credible path going forward. I was just, I'm sitting there going, boy, how do you evaluate cost plus? And if that's routinely done in the industry and people could help us understand, we were willing to reach out to that. But if, if you're, if you guys are fine with us moving forward with our normal process, we'd be happy to do that. Do we have a clear understanding, Ms. West, of what the next agenda item should be as a follow-up to this?
Well, let me, let me just briefly address the fact that this is point-based in terms of the award. And the very first one is experience and qualification of an organization and personnel in administering affordable housing preservation programs. We do not have anyone on staff here at the city that has the affordable housing expertise. So yes, we can call Dr. Woods, but that's, that's not the criteria set forth for those forty points. And I would hate to jeopardize forty points.
Let's, let's cancel, let's, let's do this. Bring Dr. Woods in, save the subject matter expert until we move forward, until we move forward. So we're bringing somebody from the outside who has that experience, the rest can wait.
Okay.
I, I, I think bringing that, that subject matter expert in will help get those points.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we just, you know, absolutely, just want to have a credible evaluation. So I think that's absolutely outstanding, and then I assume Placa Gas would be happy to participate in the utility assistant ones. Wonderful. And then do we have, I just want to make sure that I understand from Commissioner Campbell what his expectations are of them, what's the best way for us to move forward with getting their input on setting the goals and the expectations of the program?
Yeah, Commissioner Campbell, you, you indicated that we should get direction from the commission on what we leave out and what we know we don't want. Can we get that feedback from the commission?
We wanted to do a workshop.
You want to workshop it, okay? We need a date.
Do you want to just send out dates and you want us to come up with a date right here and now? Because we're really running.
I believe Commissioner McCaskill, if I remember correctly, didn't have her calendar with her when we were talking about dates earlier.
And I think it's whatever's to be.
So I, I don't mind sending it out later.
Okay, that was.
So we'll send out dates for a workshop.
Just to keep moving forward.
Or if there could be a possibility that if, never mind.
We said we go to workshop, right?
No, that's a meeting, that, and I, but you, you actually were gonna hit down a point. But some of our meetings have just become lengthy and I don't, I want it to be, yeah, not really. If we're not gonna be as productive as, but just send out dates.
Well, thank, thank you very much. Like I said, I think this is an opportunity to do some really significant things for the city. So appreciate being involved, thank you for your time.
Thank you. On to number thirteen, discussion, direction, ranking of the five finalists for the position of city manager.
Wouldn't mention, Madam Mayor, that the HR department gave me a stack of resumes that I have handy.
Okay.
And I provided a handout with the, with the list of applicants.
Why are we just getting the stack?
Yeah, I, I don't know. And I, I, it's the same.
All them emails.
Yeah.
Is it the same as the email, the, the emails that came?
Yes, it should be. Minus Mr. Griffiths, yes.
If there's nothing different, I don't want it.
So at any rate, we, we, from the last meeting, task that we gave to ourselves was to return to this meeting with each of us our top five candidates. Commission, who do we start with, Commissioner Campbell?
It does, I start every time, it don't matter.
Okay.
No, that's, no, no, sir.
No, I think we need to just get through this.
We, we gotta give it one way or another, why we have to go in alphabetical order?
You don't make that decision.
But I'm.
I don't know that we need to go in.
If I volunteered to make, go first.
Don't tell me, go.
Goes last anyway, Commissioner Campbell.
I'll actually be presenting four on today because one of mine is no longer a candidate in there. I have Barkley, I have Lynn, I have, I can't say the last name. So I'm gonna say the first name, Fred, and I have Dale.
Commissioner Jones.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Borum. Are, are we coming back to you, Commissioner Jones?
You can come back too.
Commissioner Borum.
I got Derek Harris, Jonathan Lynn, Fred.
Wait a minute, I can't hear you.
Hang on.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I have Fred Ventresco, Christopher Weiner, Weiner, Sylvia Warren, and Jonathan Lynn, Derek Harris.
Ms. McCaskill. I am at a state of unreadiness due to some last-minute changes in candidates. Commissioner Jones?
Sorry. I have David Lynch, Christopher Weiner, Daryl Bell, Fred, I can't.
Ventresco.
And did I say Lynn? Lynch.
Lynch, yes.
That's five.
It's four, sir. It's four, sir. I, I have to repeat you back, I have Lynch, Christopher Weiner, Daryl Bell, and Fred Ventresco.
Oh, David Lynch.
David Lynch was the first one. Or is it two different people?
Jonathan Lynn.
Jonathan Lynn, thank you, sir.
Um, okay, I, I will go to it. My first choice isn't available, but then Fred Ventresco, Patrick Marsh, Christopher Dorsey, Jonathan Lynn, and then Christopher Weiner, Weiner. Weiner, I think that's pronounced. And so here we are. There seems to be some people in common, that's a good sign.
Yeah, are we able to at this moment identify the ones that we have mostly in common?
I think Sunny noted all of them. Achoo.
Right, Weiner and Lynn, okay, so. Mayor, if I may proceed, so that we can kind of bring this thing to a resolve. Um, we have three that is at the majority. Uh, we have a commissioner that is at a state of unreadiness, which means um technically. Uh, we don't have, she maybe bring somebody that may be uh. Part of the top three. So I would lean on the uh commission to. As we haste to proceed and move forward, um and trying to get some continued moveage. With regards to this position that is so critical. That at what point um will we be able to have the four, all five of us? With a list, even with the given last minute changes, there still should have been. An ability to avail who you were. We had a five recommendation, um even if you, there was to bring forth one, two, or three. Uh, but not to be in a state of unreadiness with nothing, I think that does us a disadvantage. How do we proceed?
At this point also, we have to determine who is gonna contact these folks when we get to that point. Um, one of us has to be the point person since we have taken that out of the hands of any city employees. Um, I assume that's probably gonna be me and that's fine unless somebody has another thought about that. But I think we need to just keep proceeding. Commissioner McCaskill, do you have any thoughts or input because you're undecided? Okay, please.
If I could give you more time, maybe the next meeting or what uh, to, I wanna have time to be with the senior advisor in this process now. I am at a state of unreadiness. You did say that there was a senior advisor, somebody that could help us in this process, right? When you all were removed, you all, you did say that we have someone that we can reach out to and through the league, am I correct?
Correct, um, when I contacted the league, um, they referred us to the senior advisors, Mr. Ken Parker.
That has been available since that time.
Excuse me?
He has been available this entire time.
I know that he has, but my decision, I'm at a state of unreadiness due to a change.
And the question still remains, how do we move forward with this?
So I asked if I made my, my fellow commissioners, if I may have additional time, if not, it's, it's, it's up to you, I'm off board. You have a majority.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we're gonna bring in four or five?
Um. I don't think we've decided that yet, so I guess, I know, I guess that's the question.
Things, we, if you're talking, I think we talked about the top, top five. I think that's always good.
At this point, you move forward with the top five, is that what we're suggesting here, which is um a cost? And what, what are we gonna do for the next step when we say move forward the top five? What, what do we mean by that specifically?
Is it possible you have to have, have the HR, HR, the contact?
We ask them to pull out.
Listen, hold it, we, they, they're just, they're not.
Saying how, at our last meeting, we made it unequivocally clear. That this would be the meeting that we proceed regardless of who, what, when, where, and how. This can is being further kicked down the road and it's not fair to the process or the people that we have in limbo. And I'm gonna say this because before we've had extensive conversation about how we even get to this point. And so now, even in the event of unreadiness, there still should be something that you can contribute to this conversation. That would allow us to push forward, even if there has been last minute changes, regardless of who it is. There's still others on that list that should be there.
We also don't even know if there's two available.
If I want to vote with, if I don't, if I want a promotion. There's a majority.
Yeah, we don't have to hold a process up or whatever, we can continue to move forward.
But she asked for additional time.
Right.
I said, if we don't do that, if I don't get additional time, let's go with the majority.
That's a cop out.
Uh, please don't call me a cop out.
Okay, here we are, we, we need to, we again, are at a stalemate, we need to move forward, Commissioner Borum.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I think based on what we had, I mean, we, we, we say we're gonna come back, we're gonna give. The five and give direction to move forward. And so at this point, we have brought the um candidates forward that we have. And we just move to the next step in which we can just say, okay, we'll have the HR person to. Reach out to the people that we have presented to see uh of their availability. So we don't, we don't continue to, you know, further delay, the process has already been delayed quite a bit already. And so to continue to do that is a disservice to people serving in various capacities in this. And we gotta get an administrator, we waited for quite some time. And we've got people who have submitted their applications because we have the city have posted the position available. So we need to give those people their due, their due. We, we won't have anybody, if, if we continue to go down this process, people will not want to apply at this city. Because we are not selecting candidates who are fit, you know, fit to the, the requirements.
So as a result of the conversation and we move forward, do we make the recommendation that even at this moment, that process has been closed? And that no further people will be able to be brought to the table? Because we have to make contact with these people to let them know that we are either, they, those that are not, those that we have. That have been dangling for so long, we have to make sure that those people get some kind of formal communication. That thank you for, thank you for applying, but we are looking to move, you're not, whatever the jargon is. So that's what we have to do, that's what we gotta continue to make these decisions. Because we have people dangling from the last time still.
Right.
Oh, I thought people did get notification.
Oh, they did not get notification.
Ms. Jones, could you please clarify?
The individuals that we interviewed last time, everyone was notified of the decision that was made. The four that we had, the rest of them dropped out of the race, um did not, they had already voluntarily dropped out. Because of, for whatever reason, the four that we interviewed.
Well, I have gotten communication from at least two of them that they still haven't heard anything from the city. And this was as of yesterday.
Okay. Well, okay, so I know I did prepare the letters, I did um send them out and I did maintain copies too.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Um, looking back at my notes, just because I want to make sure I calculated the votes correctly. Um, I've only got four names listed for Commissioner Campbell.
That's what I said, I've only submitted four.
Sorry, I was just making sure, sir, I don't want to be wrong.
So again, Commissioner Borum suggested that we move forward and ask you HR. Is that how we want to proceed to contact these, are we seeing the top four candidates here or?
Yeah, one of us highlighted, we call them in.
Okay, that's the top.
For interviews, schedule interviews.
Can we pick one out of them, because we said, we said top five, so if we continue to limit ourselves, because we asked to bring five back. So I don't, those other ones, let's, let's, let's get one.
But they aren't.
Well, the top five was to see, do we have them all, we have them in common, because we could have just had two.
Yeah, we could.
And if we had them all in common, then then that would have been the top, that would have been it.
That's it, the top four.
Um, Mayor Commissioners, if I may, um, in order to contact the, are we contacting the top four? And I'm setting up interviews, um, direction on, do we want to, because the background is gonna be, it's gonna take longer than a normal background. Do we want to proceed with background checks at this time?
If that is the, if that, is that the current process that we currently have where it's when we select those individuals? That, that is our process, correct?
Because these are your five finals, which was our um, the recommendation from the senior advisor. And the background check on a normal applicant wouldn't be, but these would take a more of extent. Because what happens is they may go out, once you put in for certain things for these positions. They go out to the locations if they're right there and actually pull personnel files and get more information on the individual. So it could take much longer than the week or so that I would get a normal background check back. So. Just direction on, do I start on these five or do we, are we gonna interview and then start? And it still would be maybe, I don't know, how long that process is gonna be before they get everything back? So that individual could start, I just need clear direction on what it is you're asking me.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, did we say once, once they were selected, that then when you come back to the, to table? That not what we said?
Yeah, I, from the last meeting, you guys, um, the commission, um, you were gonna select five. At that time, I did not know, because actually Ms. West and myself had been moved from the equation. So I did not know that you were gonna bring it back or who was gonna be responsible for the backgrounds. There was talk about an outside source maybe finishing the process. So, but I'm willing to do whatever, I just want to make sure I got clear direction in moving forth on the candidates. So I don't overlook anything.
The, the only thing that we, 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 we pull staff back from was being part of the pro, the selection process. Of the city manager, that's it, everything else, it, it's in play. It's in, it's in play, so in, 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 we, we need this, you know, not, we can't. Do everything right here, right now, in terms of telling you what next step, whatever the next steps in our, in our, in our procedure involves.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, cuz I, could I suggest, um. When we do. Regular backgrounds, do we solicit a service? Or do uh law enforcement officers, the police department conduct the background of?
I use applicant insight for our normal background checks, it's an online service. I put in all of the information that I need from whatever on driver's license, that type thing for the city manager. It's, we're looking for education, so we're looking for a lot more things. Um, the school system has to tell us, you know, are these um diplomas and stuff we have, is this correct, so?
Right, yes, and we want that full background, but just like a credit check, you do a soft credit check before they get approved for a car. Can we do a soft, we, they already signed on the application, right, that they consent to a background check?
Right.
Okay, so, and this is why I'm asking this question.
Okay.
When we got into the interview process the last time.
Mm-hmm.
At the twelfth hour, we got information handed to us. So I'm saying, we don't want those kind of surprises again. We wanna have, at least before we bring them up, and spend the two hundred fifty dollars, you say twenty-five hundred dollars?
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Was the quote for each background.
Correct.
Why do the twenty-five hundred dollar background on some two people that we're not gonna even consider after the first round of interviews? You understand?
Right, okay.
I, I, I'm just saying, five thousand dollars, that's ten thousand dollars we're talking about, right?
And now, Commissioner Campbell.
Can we see if the persons are available for the job prior to us spending money doing a background?
Okay, so.
Can you, can, can you assist with the background of your department or how's that?
Uh, yes, uh, we'd be willing to assist HR as much as possible to um gather any information. Um, I, I, I do believe there's some things that she do, she does for the preliminary background for uh the city manager. Is a little different than we do for our preliminary backgrounds for us. But I do believe it's important that you gather the information you need to go into the uh interview, interview. So if, if needed, yes, we will make ourselves available.
I say, because a lot of these people have been dangling for quite some time. And if those top four are not still interested in the job, um for whatever reason. I think we need to have that determined first.
Okay.
Um, and then proceed.
Okay. Okay, so I will make the phone call tomorrow on the top four candidates to make sure that they're still available for the position or still having interest. In the position. That would be my first step. From there, then we would move into the preliminary background portion of this to start. Before we set any interviews. And then we will get some dates together as to when you all will be available or when you want to interview, if it's gonna be in person. Are we doing in-person interviews?
Yeah, because that Zoom last.
Okay, thanks. Okay, cuz I would check, because I believe some of the individuals would be traveling from out of state coming in. So I would have to make sure I got an availability, um. Time is not just in a rush and say, they may not be available in a week if they're still, but I don't know what the, what it'll be like. But I will contact them and find out and try to get the interview, the background process started if they're available, first and foremost. So before I schedule interviews, would you like me to get, make sure I receive some of that feedback from the background before the interviews are set?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. So I will, I'll ask this question, because there are many steps of information that I'm going to be receiving from the background. Is there any area in particular that you want me to focus on to make sure I get back? Um, that you all will be really interested in, whether it's education wise, um. Yeah, social media, all of these platforms.
Can you, can you put together a list of. The things that you generally would look.
Looking for in the background.
That way we'll be able to kind of process of elimination of what? Because at this point.
Okay, understood.
That's one of the things that.
No, that's fine.
Back at the last hour, so definitely for sure.
Okay.
We want as many avenues as possible so we can find out as much about.
But you said of what she wants prior to scheduling.
Okay.
So I would like to see the list of things, of course.
Yeah.
We know the basic things, but there may be something that we're not thinking about right now that may be on that list of things. That we might be like, you know what, I didn't think about that, and if that's something that we look for, I want to make sure that's at the forefront.
Okay.
You, you can send that to us in the email?
Yes, I will. Everybody electronically, anybody electronically.
I'm a digital person.
Okay.
Anything further direction for Ms. Jones? Any further discussion about this topic? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, 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 I got it.
Okay, yeah. I'll get, I'm sorry, Commissioner comments.
Well, is Ms. Walsh still here?
I don't know about that. I don't see her.
I think she's in, she, she may be.
She out in the lobby? She in her office?
Okay, cuz I, I, I had sent, sent in a request, uh, oh, I sent him a request for information. Um, for Royal League of Cities, uh, did y'all get that request then regarding the building permit? Uh, information that we need to send, I sent it in an email.
To me? I apologize, I.
I sent it to you and the interim city manager.
Is there a request for what, sir?
Building permit information for three, three years and we're trying to gather information regarding that. I sent it, I sent it on Friday.
I don't recall seeing that, but I have been really, really tied up with a couple of, with, like the eight cases that we presented tonight.
If, if I, I have your email pulled up and it was sent to Jonathan and you copied me, I forwarded to Ms. Walsh just now.
Okay. So, yeah.
Thanks, honey.
Thought I put your name in there, but so I'm sorry about that. But yeah, I just wanna see if we can get that information, just do it on the eighteenth and hopefully we can get it back to them by that time. This should be pretty straightforward, something that we should already have for three years prior.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
One of those uh.